We are going to bring our meeting to order. Thank you, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to the August 26th regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. City Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowles, here. Councilmember Beer, here. Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Present.
And Mayor Vodarlos is participating, is requesting to participate remotely.
Yes. Mayor Vodarlos is requesting to participate remotely pursuant to Assembly Bill 2449, which allows remote participation for emergency circumstances. Mayor, can you confirm for the record that you are requesting to participate remotely under Assembly Bill 2449?
Yes, due to medical emergency.
Very good, thank you. And can you please describe for the record the general circumstances related to your need to appear remotely? Medical?
I'm currently suffering from a medical emergency.
Understood. Under Assembly Bill 2449, you are required to identify whether any other individual 18 years of age is present in the room, or more than one, present in the room at the remote location that you are calling from, and identify the general nature of the relationship that you have with any individuals that are physically present in your location.
I am in my home. My husband is present in my home, but in a separate room.
Thank you very much. Council, we will need to vote to approve the remote participation by roll call vote.
Madam Mayor Protem, is there any public comment before the vote?
Is there any public comment before the vote? Seeing none in the chambers, Emily, is there any, are there any hands raised for public comment on this issue? Thank you. Then we'll have a roll call, roll call vote, please.
Is there a motion, it's end a second?
So moved.
Second.
The motion by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Councilmember Big Stick. Do roll call votes, starting with Councilmember Bowles?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Big Stick?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Vodarlos?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And I will read the land acknowledgement. "The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama'tush' Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rama'tush' Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Rama'tush' Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama'tush' Aloni peoples." And would you please salute, help us in the salute to the flag? Councilmember Beer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. I have a couple of special presentations this evening prior to the beginning of our business. We're going to start with the proclamation for National Preparedness Month. And I believe Fire Chief Phil Amabley is here? Yes? And I see, I think we have a couple firefighters in the room. Hi, Jeremy, hi. Okay. Fire Chief Bill Amabley and Battalion Chief Craig Whitner and others are here.
And it's Deputy Chief.
Pardon me?
Deputy Chief Bill Amabley. Fire Chief is Ron Myers.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Chief Myers. All right. "Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of National Preparedness Month, September 2024. Whereas during September, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the National Preparedness Month Coalition urge all Americans to take some simple steps to make their families better prepared for emergencies. And whereas, with the COVID-19 pandemic of 2020, 2021, the South Bay fires of 2020, and yearly winter storms in our county, all will continue to have devastating effects on the people and the economy. And whereas, the loss of life and property can be greatly reduced if appropriate preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas, these lifesaving procedures will be highlighted during the month of September as the North County Fire Authority, City Emergency Services, and other service organizations provide disaster preparedness information to Pacifica residents. And whereas, the community should take steps to help them before a disaster strikes, including making a kit, having a plan, being informed, and getting involved. And whereas, it is highly recommended that our citizens become involved by participating in earthquake preparedness classes and Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, programs. And whereas, the important safety information should be studied and observed throughout the year in order to reduce injuries, loss of life, and property damage in the event of a disaster. Now, therefore, I, Sue Beckmeyer, on behalf of Sue Vodarlos, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim, September 2024, as National Preparedness Month in the City of Pacifica, and encourage all Pacifica residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to follow before, during, and after a disaster done this 26th day of August 2024." Thank you for being here.
Great, thank you. On behalf of Chief Ron Myers and North County Fire Authority, accept this proclamation. And I just wanted to point out that every year that, of this proclamation, there is a theme. Last year it was elderly, and this year it's Asian Americans, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander. And part of why that was brought about is looking at the census that there was a Pew study research done, and from the year 2000 to 20, I think it's 18 or 19, that there was an increase of over 80% of the population in the United States in that, those community groups there. And with some studies that were done and questionnaires, they found out that in that, within that group, more than 50% didn't feel that preparing for an emergency was a necessary thing, or it was along those lines. And so that's the reason that that was chosen for this year as a theme, to try to prepare. So with that, anybody who's looking to prepare and wants to do things is looking at the city's website, PD's website, North County Fire's website, as well as ready.gov in Samatail County. And there's all kinds of help there to help people look into what they want to do to, you know, how much they want to participate to prepare themselves.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Council, anyone have comments? Go ahead.
First of all, thank you for being here. I used to serve on emergency preparedness, which I love doing, and I'm grateful that Councilmember Bowles gets to have that experience. It's good to have those insights into how much work you all put into making sure we are prepared for an emergency. During occasions like this, I like to invite you to say a word or two about Zone Haven or SMC Alerts, if it would seem prudent. And again, I thank you very much for being here.
Yes, Zone Haven, now it's known as Genesis Protect. It's been changed, but it started out as Zone Haven, so a lot of people continue, which is fine. When you see some literature, it'll refer to both, so you will see that. As well as Samatail County, I do encourage people to download different apps. There's multiple apps, even FEMA has an app too, that you can download for emergency preparedness. But definitely Samatail County Alert System, things that are going on in the county, including, you know, just where there's road, even just road closures. But one thing I look at with the apps when I'm looking at emergency preparedness, it's great to have all these resources. But if you're actually preparing yourself, what if a cell site's down? What if you lost your phone? What if the battery ran out? You're not going to have access to those things. Using them during this, but is also preparing for emergencies when you don't have any of those resources available. So it's being prepared, you know, ahead of time, in case those things are out. But definitely, there are links on the websites to be able to download those apps. Samatail County as well as North County Fire's website, and I'm sure on Pacifica PD and the city's website.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beer?
Yeah, thank you so much for being here tonight. Thanks, everyone from North County Fire. You know how much we appreciate you, and you keep us safe all the time. I do have a question for you. I'm curious if you are doing a, like, focused outreach to the communities that you mentioned.
Well, as far as seeing that, we are, not specifically in North County, we are trying to reach out with multiple languages on our website. You get things updated, so when people want to get things, we, I think there's, I can't say which languages, but I think there's four right now on our website and links. That's what we're working with through Daily City, because they're helping with some of that, and our own website. So as far as, we haven't reached out directly, and as far as just becoming recently aware of what the theme is, I just thought I'd bring it up, and certainly.
Thank you, I appreciate that. With my work hat, I'm part of the North County Outreach Collaborative, and we would be happy to help North County Fire reach out to those communities, so please let us know.
Okay, will do.
Councilmember Bowles?
Yes, thank you for being here, Deputy Chief, and thank you to our police in the back of the room that also run our Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission and work with our CERT volunteers also. It really takes the whole community working together. I wanted to plug the CERT program a little bit. I know the classes just started this week, but I was trained in this back in San Francisco, and just, it's important for the public to understand that when an emergency comes, and it will, winter's coming, as we know from Game of Thrones and our own flooding and so forth here. Also, I mean, a big earthquake is supposed to come soon, right? So, and when an event like that happens, our police and fire will not be able to be at everyone's home, right? They're going to the major events where the most people are affected. And so it's really important for you to be able to take care of yourself, but also to look out for your neighbors. And so the CERT program's a really great way to get training in that. They also help you map your neighborhood, so you know, like, if you have seniors that might need a little help, or if you have people with certain equipment or capabilities that can help your neighborhood survive over time. So really encourage people to look into that. And I'll just make another plug, at our next Emergency Preparedness meeting on September 18th, at 6:30, we're going to have Representative from Thrive Alliance come. And one of the things they're trying to do at the county level is actually help organize nonprofits. Again, knowing that, you know, nonprofits are here in town during an emergency, and again, they have resources and people that can help distribute food, et cetera. So the more we're all aware and prepared, the better we'll all survive. So, thank you.
Mayor, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, I would like to specifically thank the Fire Department for a past fire, and also for my recent medical incident where I required the Fire Department. And I'd like to really thank them for being there and understanding, and for the things that they do every day in this town, that we're always appreciative of what they do. So thank you again.
Thank you. And for my part, as a day job, school district employee in the Pacifica School District, I will be checking in with our administration to see what we're, what we're pushing out to our students and how we're bringing this theme forward this month. So thank you for that. And then I wanted to check if there was any public comment on this item. And anyone on the phone?
We have one raised hand. It is for, we do not have one raised hand.
Okay. All right, then. We have the proclamation to give to you. And did we need a photo tonight for any purpose? You know, historical documentation?
It's up to the mayor.
I think we need a photo. Can we make sure the mayor's face is in the background? Don't you? Where did he go?
Chief, you're up here with us. Emergency preparedness, get over here.
Okay, you ready? And then can we just do one more, just for, we'll, in the background. Just one more. Listen to the mayor. Ready?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you so much. All right. And we also have a special commendation letter for one of our citizens, and for someone who is dear to this council and dear to us in city service. And that person is Chris Redfield. "On behalf of the City of Pacifica, I am hereby pleased to present this letter of commendation to Chris Redfield, whose outstanding commitment to public service saved a life on July 5th, 2024. Chris has lived in Pacifica since 1987, totaling 37 years of residency, and was appointed to the City of Pacifica Planning Commission in March of 2024. He currently works as a maintenance worker at Brisbane Marina in the City of Brisbane. On July 5th, 2024, Chris and staff learned about an active drowning incident and rushed to the aid of the victim. His immediate action and perseverance successfully rescued a life. The City of Pacifica is very fortunate to have residents like Chris who demonstrate the utmost commitment to public service. Chris has been a longtime resident and continues to make a significant impact in and around the community. The city is honored to acknowledge his lifesaving contributions. On behalf of the mayor, sincerely, Sue Vodarlos, Mayor of the City of Pacifica." I have some lights, not surprisingly. I don't know who was first. Oh, look, I was first. Oh, you pushed my button. Would you please go ahead, Councilmember Big?
Technically, we changed seats, so you don't have a button right now. But I have two, so I use them both, because I'm emphatic.
All right, please, go ahead.
And, you know, I probably won't have the opportunity to be up here at any time in the, at least near future, gushing over you. And so I thought I'd take a moment, because I'm not going to have many other comments before our big agenda item tonight. So, you know, I vaguely recall when I first became aware of you, and I thought to myself, and this is the polite cleaned-up version, who's this wise acre at the podium making such comments that may otherwise be deleterious to our civic discourse? And I kept my eye on you therefrom, as I was a regular gadfly at that point in time, as you were quickly becoming yourself. And I observed how, within a short amount of time, between a year or two, you took enough of a vested interest to be a part of a community group discussing a city matter. And your tone of voice changed from one that, at a glance, I initially determined to be deleterious, and which rose to the level of poetic. And it has been a distinct pleasure, privilege, honor to, in some configuration or another, over the course of now, most of a decade at least, observe and watch as you have become cognizant enough of your own voice to raise it to a place that, boy, are you trying to contribute something valuable. So that's on a regular, you know, every-other-week basis. And then, at some event, the mayor of Brisbane walks up to me, hey, do you know this Chris Redfield guy? I kind of grew up with him over the last decade. Sure, why? You know, he's a hero? Huh? You know, I value the way that you have elevated your voice to be able to think in terms of how can different viewpoints have good conversation, the kind where we grow as a community. I am so deeply grateful and privileged that Pacifica gets to boast having, you know, a planning commission in which one of our planning commissioners is a bona fide hero. And it's just that kind of apex of reminding us, thanks for being a good dude through and through, heart to hand. Thank you.
Councilmember?
I hate.
Councilmember Beer?
I hate following Tiger. I know. It's terrible. So I saw your name on the agenda, and I didn't know what, what it was for, and I was like, what, what are we doing with Chris? Like, is he leaving Pacifica? I couldn't understand. And so as Mayor Protem was reading, I found myself becoming emotional, because, because what a beautiful thing, to be able to just selfishly, unselfishly, excuse me, respond so quickly. And I don't know, I just thank you so much, Chris, for so many things, but I am emotional about this, just because what else can I say except for thank you?
Councilmember Bowles?
I don't have too much more to say either, but, but thank you. I mean, you, you were in the right place at the right time. You were brave enough to not, you know, just yell, hey, someone's drowning, but to jump in and, and do what needed to be done. And, and that does take a rare person.
And I really commend you for that, and thank you. Do we have any comments in the audience or on the phone? Emily?
We have one raised hand. It is for Stedjink Dan.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I'd like to thank Chris Redfield for saving a life. I've known Chris for over 10 years as former rescue diver myself, with 11 live rescues and more than 60 body recoveries. I really appreciate what you've done, and I'm certain the potential victim's family does also. It's cold, dangerous, and relatively thankless. We first met when Chris's car was floating down the street when Lindemar flooded, and we both talked about suing the city together. But I will say, known Chris a while, he's a good guy, he delivers. And as someone from the Democratic side of the aisle, he is hands down one of the nicest hardcore Republicans I know in Pacifica. Thank you very much, Chris.
And I would like very much to have a photo, if you're all right with that, sir.
Did you want to say anything?
Did you want to say anything?
I did. I wanted to say, oh, shucks, thank you. So, no, thank you. This is quite an honor. I appreciate it, not necessary, but I do appreciate it. It takes a village. As you pointed out, right place, right time, right equipment, right training. It was just, it couldn't have been scripted any better. So, the outcome was outstanding. So, I appreciate it. It's been an honor to work for the, you know, the City of Brisbane. It was my harbor master, Andrew Rayberg, operated the boat. It worked out really well. A local Pacifican, Jimmy Hart, who's a fire captain in Brisbane, was right on the scene. So, it took a village, and it took everybody to make this be a wonderful outcome. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we also have a special commendation letter for one of our citizens and for someone who is dear to this council and dear to us in city service. And that person is Chris Redfield. On behalf of the City of Pacifica, I am hereby pleased to present this letter of commendation to Chris Redfield, whose outstanding commitment to public service saved a life on July 5th, 2024. Chris has lived in Pacifica since 1987, totaling 37 years of residency, and was appointed to the City of Pacifica Planning Commission in March of 2024. He currently works as a maintenance worker at Brisbane Marina in the City of Brisbane. On July 5th, 2024, Chris and staff learned about an active drowning incident and rushed to the aid of the victim. His immediate action and perseverance successfully rescued a life. The City of Pacifica is very fortunate to have residents like Chris who demonstrate the utmost commitment to public service. Chris has been a longtime resident and continues to make a significant impact in and around the community. The city is honored to acknowledge his lifesaving contributions. On behalf of the mayor, sincerely, Sue Vodderlas, Mayor of the City of Pacifica. I don't know who was first. Oh, look, I was first. Oh, you pushed my button. Would you please go ahead, Councilmember?
Technically, we changed seats, so you don't have a button right now. But I have two, so I use them both because I'm emphatic.
All right, please, go ahead.
And, you know, I probably won't have the opportunity to be up here at any time in the, at least near future, gushing over you. And so I thought I'd take a moment because I'm not going to have many other comments before our big agenda item tonight. So, you know, I vaguely recall when I first became aware of you, and I thought to myself, and this is the polite cleaned-up version, who's this wise acre at the podium making such comments that may otherwise be deleterious to our civic discourse? And I kept my eye on you therefrom as I was a regular gadfly at that point in time, as you were quickly becoming yourself. And I observed how, within a short amount of time, between a year or two, you took enough of a vested interest to be a part of a community group discussing a city matter. And your tone of voice changed from one that, at a glance, I initially determined to be deleterious, and which rose to the level of poetic. And it has been a distinct pleasure, privilege, honor to, in some configuration or another, over the course of now most of a decade at least, observe and watch as you have become cognizant enough of your own voice to raise it to a place that, boy, are you trying to contribute something valuable. So, that's on a regular, you know, every-other-week basis. And then, at some event, the mayor of Brisbane walks up to me, hey, do you know this Chris Redfield guy? I kind of grew up with him over the last decade. Sure, why? You know, he's a hero? Huh? You know, I value the way that you have elevated your voice to be able to think in terms of how can different viewpoints have good conversation, the kind where we grow as a community. I am so deeply grateful and privileged that Pacifica gets to boast having, you know, a planning commission in which one of our planning commissioners is a bona fide hero. And it's just that kind of apex of reminding us, thanks for being a good dude through and through, heart to hand. Thank you.
Councilmember? I hate. Councilmember Beer. I hate following Tiger. It's terrible. So, I saw your name on the agenda, and I didn't know what it was for. And I was like, what are we doing with Chris? Like, is he leaving Pacifica? I couldn't understand. And so, as Mayor Protem was reading, I found myself becoming emotional because, because what a beautiful thing to be able to just selfishly, unselfishly, excuse me, respond so quickly. And, I don't know, I just thank you so much, Chris, for so many things, but I am emotional about this, just because what else can I say except for thank you?
Councilmember Bowles.
I don't have too much more to say either, but thank you. I mean, you were in the right place at the right time. You were brave enough to not, you know, just yell, hey, someone's drowning, but to jump in and do what needed to be done. And that does take a rare person. So, thank you on their behalf and on our behalf, as we have these dangers around us every day. And may you be an inspiration, you know, to others here to look out for each other. Yes, thank you.
Mayor?
Chris, I have always thought you were an amazing person. All the things that you do for the city, so amazing. And then, when I heard this at the library outpost opening, I was surprised that I hadn't heard more about it earlier. And I'm thankful that we get to give you this commendation because just all the things that you do are amazing. Thank you for being on planning. Thank you for attending all the meetings that you attend and this one really, really special item. Thank you.
And I'll just add to that, to, you know, the deputy chief's points earlier about our Preparedness Month, you were prepared. You were, your training, you had the equipment that you needed, and you took decisive action. And to me, that is just, speaks to your preparedness, and it's something that, I know you, and I know that this is really uncomfortable for you right now, and I apologize for that. But I just want to say that really, this is something that any of us can do. This is, you know, assuming we have the equipment and all of that, but we can rise to the occasion when needed. And I really commend you for that, and thank you. Do we have any comments in the audience or on the phone? Emily?
We have one raised hand. It is for Stedjink Dan.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I'd like to thank Chris Redfield for saving a life. I've known Chris for over 10 years as a former rescue diver myself, with 11 live rescues and more than 60 body recoveries. I really appreciate what you've done, and I'm certain the potential victim's family does also. It's cold, dangerous, and relatively thankless. We first met when Chris's car was floating down the street when Lindemar flooded, and we both talked about suing the city together. But I will say, known Chris a while, he's a good guy, he delivers. And as someone from the Democratic side of the aisle, he is hands down one of the nicest hardcore Republicans I know in Pacifica. Thank you very much, Chris.
And I would like very much to have a photo, if you're all right with that, sir.
Did you want to say anything?
Did you want to say anything?
I did. I wanted to say, oh, shucks, thank you. So, no, thank you. This is quite an honor. I appreciate it, not necessary, but I do appreciate it. It takes a village. As you pointed out, right place, right time, right equipment, right training. It was just, it couldn't have been scripted any better. So, the outcome was outstanding. So, I appreciate it. It's been an honor to work for the, you know, the City of Brisbane. It was my harbor master, Andrew Rayberg, operated the boat. It worked out really well. A local Pacifican, Jimmy Hart, who's a fire captain in Brisbane, was right on the scene. So, it took a village, and it took everybody to make this be a wonderful outcome. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem, can I just say one thing really quick?
Of course.
I just wanted to shout out, one of my students is here. Her name's Emmy, and she is working for PCT right now in the back room. And I'm so excited to have her here. So, way to go, Emmy. You don't have to come out. I'm not trying to embarrass you, but I'm so proud of you.
Welcome, Emmy. All right, councilmembers, we're going to turn our attention to our consent calendar, items one through six. Are there any councilmembers who wish to pull an item from consent? Nope, seeing none. I would like to know if there is any public comment on a consent item, one through six. I don't have any cards here on those, except for I do have one card that didn't have an item number, but I think it might be for the short-term rental ordinance, Alex? Or is it for, is it for the short-term rental? Yeah, okay. So, we'll leave that for then. And are there any comments regarding consent on the phone?
We have one raised hand. It is for Stedjink Dan.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. I'd like to thank you for your service over the last four and a half years. I'd like to just call out that this is the first city council meeting in more than four and a half years when the Anza Pump Station emergency is not on the consent calendar list. And whatever it took to fix it, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
Ooh, snap.
Thank you. And I think I have a light. Councilmember Bowles.
I just had a follow-up question about the item four, the manor paving. So, I was asking what the warranty period was and when it actually started. And the response I got from staff was the standard warranty is one year from the completion of the work. I know the main project was completed, and then they had to do some rework on manor drive itself. So, I'm just curious what the actual date of final completion is. So, if residents, you know, continue to have any issues, we can make sure to let staff know in time.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Bowles. Councilmember Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. So, yeah, the warranty period is from completion both of construction and punchless items. I don't have the specific date. Perhaps Deputy Director Yip might have that if he's available and does have what the actual date would be.
Thank you, City Manager. Deputy Director Roland, yep, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Deputy Director Yip of Public Works slash City Engineer. So, the final completion date would be considered as the June date where they have to come back and complete the manor drive resurfacing. So, that would be considered something as we, as a punchless item for them, a final punchless item. So, we will be one year from June to start our warranty period.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I have a?
Oh, sure. You may. I never did close public comment, so I guess I'm going to reopen public comment, having never closed it. Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to advocate for the expenditure for the centrifuge for wastewater. That is a key piece of equipment. You've all toured the plant. That is one of the final things where they truck the sledge out and that, the redundant systems, but this is always great to have a backup on that. I think it's a prudent expenditure. I'm also going to advocate for the camera work and the design work, the engineering work for the sewer item. I can't remember. I think it's item six on the agenda.
Thanks.
Don't quote me on that. So, I'm really appreciative of all the advancements that have come forward in the wastewater systems and the sewer system. So, I just wanted to say thank you to an understaffed department who is doing excellent work to bring Pacifica's infrastructure up to snuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, then, I will close public comment, assuming there's no other hands. No, close public comment. Councilmember Bowles.
No, I was, just in light of the sewer, I just wanted to explain that this is in Rockaway and Valleymar, that the city's going to be working on sewer replacements. And so, if you need your sewer lateral updated, this is a really good time. It'll cost you a lot less money to do that work. And we really encourage people because it helps reduce all the infiltration in rainstorms and so forth, and helps our overall system performance. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
The motion by Councilmember Bowles and the second by Councilmember Big Stick. I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Bowles. Yes. Councilmember Beer. Yes. Councilmember Big Stick.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Vodderlas.
Yes.
And the motion to approve the consent calendar passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So, we're ready to move on to our public comments on items not on the posted agenda. So, if anyone has, this portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided, however, that only items not on the agenda for the meeting may be addressed. Comments on non-agendized items must stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If comments do not stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, I will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If the warning is not followed, I will direct the city clerk to cut off microphone. And councilmembers shall not enter into debate with speakers under public comments. And a maximum of three minutes will be allowed if there is any comment on items not on the agenda tonight.
We have three raised hands.
So, if you're raising your hand on the Zoom call for items not on tonight's agenda, that would mean not related to the short-term rental study session, please keep your hand raised. If you've raised your hand to speak on that item, that item is number seven, which will be the thing we're going to turn our attention to shortly. Do you still have three raised hands?
I now have four raised hands.
Oh, great. Items not, if I keep talking, then we're going to get it up. Okay, go ahead.
I am commenting tonight because thank you for reading the land acknowledgement. I, if you listen to the hearing, the last hearing on the quarry, I was pretty disturbed to see the city staff take a position of using a loophole to not acknowledge the living descendants of indigenous folks who lived in the quarry. And it just feels really bad to use a bureaucratic technicality to further erase a history of people that we all know got decimated. And it was really just to have a consultation with a tribe was what is, you know, called for by law, and to use a loophole again just feels really, really bad. So if this court comes back to you, I would suggest not reading the land acknowledgement if that's the going to be the staff position that evening because it just feels really terrible. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next raised hand is for Janine McCart.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, I was unclear on the instructions. Are we talking about short-term rental now or is that waiting until later?
We're waiting on that item. We're right now on items not on tonight's agenda.
Perfect, so I can go ahead and lower my hand until then.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other raised hands.
All right, then, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. I would like to request that council communications be limited to two to three minutes maximum per individual council member so that we may begin the study session discussion on short-term rentals as quickly as possible. So we can do a public comment period at the end of the meeting, which will be recorded and available for anyone who isn't here or up at that hour, unless council disagrees with that. If you have something pressing and you want to make sure that it's heard, please go ahead and flick your light or we'll go down the line. Wait, wait.
I'm totally in favor of waiting. The only one thing I want to say is, Mayor Vaterlaus, it's good to see your head in a screen, given how little time we've even been able to get you by a text message, let alone a phone call. So I'm so grateful you're here tonight. Speedy recovery and that which ails you, and let's get on with the show.
And Mayor, did you have anything that you wanted to?
No, I'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome, and it's good to see you. All right. Staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I do have one communication that I don't want to wait, and that is that I would like to take this opportunity, and it's great that we have a full house and for everyone online, to introduce John Mullins, who's the newly appointed interim Public Works Director. And if John could come up, I'll say a few words and then and then turn it over to Mr. Mullins. So John has a long and accomplished career in Public Works and local government service, spanning construction management, planning, building, technology improvement, and excellent customer service. Notably, John served the town of Hillsborough for 17 years in roles including chief building official, interim Public Works Director, Superintendent of Public Works, and Assistant City Manager. His experience in the public and private sectors has included managing large multifaceted projects and budgets, team leadership, staff development, and problem solving. John's been working for the Public Works Department for a bit, working on GIS implementation and and other projects in the department. So he's no stranger to the Pacifica organization. In addition, he's no stranger to Pacifica because he's lived here for decades and decades. So I won't spoil that information, and I'd like to turn it over to John and and welcome him and see if he has any comments.
Welcome, and please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you. Well, Kevin covered a lot of it, so I'll just want to say thank you to Kevin for letting me join the team. I just, as Kevin mentioned, I've been working for the last few months, and it's it's been truly a team. We've been able to accomplish several things over the last few months. I'm looking forward to accomplishing several more, and and Lisa will be missed. I mean, she we're going to hold true to her visions with the GIS and some mapping features. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, then. We don't have any public hearings tonight, and we have one item on our agenda, and that is our short-term rental study session. The proposed action is to receive updates on this short-term rental program and provide direction on potential revisions to the city's short-term rental regulations. Our staff tonight will be presenting, and we will have a number of public speakers. My count for folks in the room so far is 36, and some are on their way. So we're going to start with our staff presentation, and we have Assistant City Manager Yulia Carter, Kavitha Kumar, interim Community Development Director, Stephanie Cervantes, interim Deputy Community Development Director, Breann Harcusha? Did I say it right? Thank you, Breann, our senior planner, and I think other staff may be available as well as city attorney and possibly city attorney on the phone? No?
Just Assistant City Attorney this evening.
In the room.
In the room.
Thank you very much. And do we have HDL staff on Zoom tonight?
Yes, we should have representatives from.
Brett Harmon and Alex Terazis from HDL. All right, full house. Without further ado, I have this presence pulling right up to my right-hand side. Did you want to give me a coach? That there you're letting me know that we have 26 attendees on Zoom, and we don't know how many of those are hands raised, but we'll find out later. Let's have the staff report.
If you wish to observe that, you have that option.
Thank you.
Yep.
Staff report, please.
I'm Yulia Carter, Assistant City Manager, and I'll start this presentation tonight. And well, as we mentioned, we have the whole team here, so it's going to be a team effort to cover different aspects of the staff report and potential policy considerations. Well, first of all, this meeting is a continuing policy discussion for changes in potential changes in STR regulations. So tonight's agenda includes, well, first recap of study session from June 24. We also want to give you an update of where we are in implementation of the STR program and the work that has been done since last meeting. The main topic of the discussion will be to review council requests that were provided to staff at the last meeting with the staff evaluation recommendations for each point, and we are also hoping to receive to receive direction and input from the council on refining the STR regulations that we will bring back to you for specific language and adoption later in at a future date. And of course, we want to hear from community again. Initial input was provided at the last meeting, and we have a full house today as well. So again, quick recap from the last meeting, the city heard from from the council and the community, desired changes to the STR program implementation included kind of overall inclusion of regulations in the new ordinance to help the city effectively enforce non-compliant STRs. There were comments related to addressing complaints from STR operations that were hosting parties or causing other nuisance in the neighborhoods and specifically with properties with some repeat violations. And council also wanted to understand the impact of new ordinance provisions or potential ordinance provisions from legal perspective and the impact on the community as well. So as we were taking notes from the last meeting, we we thought it would be probably most practical to present potential provisions of interest that the council identified at the last meeting into these two major categories. So the first category are the policy considerations for the new ordinance, and the second category in regulatory compliance group. And throughout the presentation, we'll just go one by one and provide analysis and impact, potential impact for each of these provisions. And before we jump into policy considerations, we wanted to give you an update on where we are in implementation of the program and also highlight the work that we've done in this last, well, less than two months since the last update that we provided to you in June. You can see two charts here on the slide, side by side. The first one is a report that we provided to you in June. This data is this data is based on June 1, 2024, and the second chart is the same data as of August 1, 2024. So you can see that the total STR accounts operating in the community did not change, but the details are quite different in each one of the categories. So the compliant STRs increased from 133 to 139, which means that the number of available permits decreased from 17 down to 11. The in-progress category also showed significant progress and was reduced also by five accounts, bringing it down to eight. The non-compliant properties that we reported to you in June, we had 25 of them at that time, and now we're down to 18, so that's minus seven. And six new accounts were discovered by HDL, and they're going through the process right now to bring them to compliance, again, on the first time, the first sort of basis as the permits still available. And also very important to highlight that in this period of time, in less than two months, we closed or shut down 12 STR operations. So you can see it at the bottom in the gray area. So we reported the total closed accounts of 60, and now we're up to 72. With that, I want to turn it to our senior planner, Breann, to go over policy considerations.
Thank you, Yulia. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. Senior Planner Breann Harcusha, as Assistant City Manager Yulia Carter mentioned, we're starting off with this segment, which is the policy considerations. I'll continue on to the next slide. So the first policy consideration we're reviewing, council requested hosted versus unhosted short-term rentals and to evaluate whether limiting number of days for unhosted STRs was a potential. Staff's evaluation, we did find that limiting unhosted rentals could be problematic and not feasible to enforce. What we're seeking this evening is for council's direction on confirming that limiting our analysis of limiting unhosted rentals is not recommended as an ordinance provision. If it is a recommendation, we are seeking on seeking direction from council on specific recommendations for limiting unhosted STRs to review in order to review the administrative impact of this provision. So I'll stop there, and we were hoping to prompt discussion, answer any questions you may have specifically about this portion of hosted versus unhosted STRs.
If I if I may chime in, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, I think that it's a it's the council's prerogative whether you want to dive in on each of these things or just hear the presentation all the way through and then.
I would prefer to hear it all the way through. I think our public will want to make comments, and if we piecemeal it, we're going to be looking at doing several public comment periods or such, and I don't want to put the public in that position. So we may need you to remind us by the time we.
Understood.
And when we circle back to this point for a conversation. Am I speaking the thoughts that you had, council members and mayor?
Yes, I have an.
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor Vaterlaus, I was I have an additional thought before we continue, if I may.
Go.
So I'm a member of this community. I've spent more than four years listening to this community, how our voice is raised together, apart, cacophonously harmoniously. And I appreciate the way that council does their diligence to the point of feasibility to take everything into consideration as we can. At the last meeting, it was a study session about giving direction. We want you to study these approaches. And now that those approaches have been studied and come back, again, we're listening acutely to the public, and we're giving feedback as though we wish to do the public's work. And I think that for some, it is striking to hear nomenclature such as confirm that limiting unhosted rentals is not recommended. And I appreciate the work that staff is doing for us on a constant basis, and that a big part of staff's job is to look at the totality of what we get to work with as an organization, the money we really get to figure out how to allocate in the best way possible to facilitate the services that hopefully we're all enjoying as a community, and the staff resources that absolutely limit at some point what we are capable of accomplishing as an organization. So I wanted to take a moment to point out that while I appreciate that staff's recommendations are not always in alignment with the community's recommendations or with some of the direction that council has telegraphed, they are certainly very interested in pursuing. Nonetheless, it is staff's job to make sure that we get as full an analysis as possible and that the very potential liabilities are flagged to us so that we can do our due diligence in deliberating the public's needs against the city's resources. And if city manager or any other staff wish to add to that comment in augmenting staff approach through the chair, I would certainly welcome it, but I certainly want to make that comment because I want to make sure it's very clear, we will be deciding through conversation with each other and hearing the community, but we need to know where those liabilities lie if we are to do our due diligence in analyzing the full picture.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowles? I just I just wanted to clarify, and maybe as you go through these, if if we could perhaps get a little bit more information. To me, it seems vague to say could be problematic and not feasible to enforce without knowing more specifically why, and especially knowing that most of the cities around us have these limits. I mean, I'm looking at this particular item now, but my comments kind of apply, you know, as we move forward. You know, have we actually is this is this, you know, our staff's opinion not having tried this before, or have we actually reached out to other communities who do have these regulations that they're trying to enforce? And and do we know, you know, specifically what their challenges are or specifically what they might be doing to solve those challenges?
Mayor Protem.
Please.
Woodhouse City Manager, if I could just provide a little bit of context and then get some direction from the council on how we want to proceed on this. So each of these items, you'll see, you know, what the council request was from June 24, and then a very brief summary statement about the staff evaluation, and then the direction we're seeking from council. Now, each of these is going to be a very substantial discussion. I'm sure council will have questions like the question that Councilmember Bowles just asked, and this first one, or these first couple related to hosted versus unhosted STRs have a whole host of questions. STRs have a whole host of questions, and the question for council is, rather than staff try to provide detailed information about all those, do you want to do that back and forth in Q and A with staff after we get through the whole presentation? Because I think we're going to take a long time to get through the whole presentation if we dive into all of the details about, you know, what our evaluation said. A lot of that information is in staff report, but, but the discussion in response to council questions on each of those. So, so seeking, seeking council direction on how you want to proceed.
Well, I think the council indicated that we want to hear the staff report and have public comment after that, and then have our discussion and deliberation. So that's the three, that's the order that I heard the council and the mayor indicate that is of interest. With that said, and not unlike the local coastal land use plan meeting we recently had, there is a need to take notes, there is a need to put a pin in it, if you will, so that when there's a burning question and it's at the tip of your tongue, you can ask a question without it being, let's have a whole answer and big discussion on it. So if there's a particularly important point that a council member or the mayor has that they want to say, on this item, I want to come back to, as councilmember Bowles did, a question about the re, the way in which this evaluation was made to make this recommendation. Am I phrasing that appropriately? So that, I feel like that's kind of a hybrid of what you just said or what you're asking. I don't think we want to engage in a lengthy discussion at this juncture, but I think it's important to give a little color or a little detail perhaps to the kinds of questions that we have. Does that sound fair enough?
Yeah, that sounds completely reasonable. And, and to councilmember Big Stick's comments, before we move to public comment, I do have a couple of comments that I want to make, but after the staff presentation.
Fair enough. All right. Please go ahead. Anything else further on this one, councilmembers and mayor?
Just a giant pin. Put a giant pin in that?
A giant pin in, okay, got it. And mayor, because I can't see you right now, I am going to rely on you to speak up and get my attention when you need.
I will.
Thank you.
I will, thank you.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. So to continue with the hosted versus unhosted STR evaluation, council also requested whether we can evaluate different permit fees for hosted versus unhosted STRs. Based on staff's evaluation, different permit fees for hosted versus unhosted rentals could present enforcement challenges, administrative complexity, and raise fairness concerns. Council, we're seeking council and direction to either confirm that different permit fees are not recommended as an ordinance provision, or if directed, staff will evaluate the impacts of this provision if it is something of interest from council.
Before we move to the next slide, is there something a councilmember or the mayor would like to put on this item in specific? I'm not seeing any, but I would like to add for myself, if you could, it seems to me that we have some kinds of examples in our master fee schedule where we do have some level of, of staggered fees, graduated fees, something like that, depending on, I'm thinking of, for example, the business license. If you have this many, for example, if you have a rental, if you have this many units or less, it's this fee. If you have this many units, it's this fee plus some percentage. I'm just using that as an example. There's a, there's a formula, there's a way in which it's stated and structured in the master fee schedule, and I think that's, for me at least, what I had in mind with this question. And so that's what I, that's what I would like to say about this when we circle back to it.
Thank you.
Okay, next, please.
For the next council request is primary residence, primary residence requirement, requiring STRs to be a primary residence with specific residency conditions. Staff evaluated this provision and identified primary residence would not be enforceable and would be mainly a self-reporting task. Council direction on this item is to confirm that the primary residence requirement is not recommended as an ordinance provision. If it is recommended, staff will evaluate the impacts of this provision.
Anything on that?
So much.
So much on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I feel like we're going to come back to all of this and ask our questions when we do that, and.
Okay. Yeah, there's just too much.
Okay. Fair enough.
But I think it's, my frustration is it's, I feel like we should be educating the public so that they can come back and give educated comments back to us.
Yeah.
And this doesn't tell me anything, and I don't think it tells them anything. Like, why is it not enforceable? I understand the self-reporting, but.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't have enough info, yeah, I would be frustrated as a member of the public.
Understood.
And I'm frustrated looking at it.
Again, the way I thought we were proceeding is the, the staff presentation is a summary, and then council's going to ask questions about, of staff, about all of these items, and then public comment, right? So, so the, the educational approach is, and we do this on a lot of presentations, is get through the whole presentation, go to council questions of staff, and answer those questions, and then hear public input, and then council discussion. Is that not?
It is, and, and I'm just, I think what I asked before is, because staff indicated a desire, at least I heard it that way, to address these one by one and not have the overview of them all, I think we're just trying to accommodate with what is the highest priority issue, the thing that comes to top of mind for one or more councilmembers, and, and just simply note that. It's not saying that's it, and it's not saying, you know, there isn't more, it was just a comment that, about the, the request, when we come back to it for understanding a level of detail about why it's difficult to, to do that, and why it would require or need to be mainly a self-reporting task. More detail.
Right. Correct. I think we're saying the same thing, except councilmember Bowles' comment just now seemed to think differently on that. So that's what I was wondering.
So I, if I may, I, I think what I'm hearing is, let's get through the slides, we go back to the beginning of the slide deck before going to public comment to ask those questions on the slides, then again, get to the end of the slide deck after we ask all the questions on the slide deck, and then, I, in that way, that'll accommodate what you're asking for, which is you want the question of why. I think, I think what I'm hearing is, get through the slides, go back to the beginning of the slide deck, ask why so we can get that information.
Okay, like, if we're just going to go back through, we're, we're just wasting time doing it twice.
I agree.
To me, so.
I agree.
So shall we go back to the first slide and ask questions?
Well, again, one point in getting through the whole presentation is so the council and the public can hear all of the scope of the council request, staff evaluation, and council direction.
We're not hearing scope when the terminology is general, is what councilmember Bowles is saying, and I would tend to agree. I get that right?
High-level overview, I think, is where we're at. So let's move on.
Continue on. Okay. For occupant, occupancy limits, council directed staff to evaluate setting limits on number of occupants per bedroom. Staff recommendation and evaluation on this item was to limit occupants to ensure proper ratio of guests to room is available. Maximum of two occupants per bedroom, and this max would not apply to children under the age of 12. Council direction on this is to direct staff to prepare a provision that allows a maximum of two occupants per bedroom, which would not apply to children under the age of 12 in the ordinance amendment. The next is parking requirements. Council requested that staff define where vehicles can be parked, garage versus driveway, and staff's recommendation was a two-part, is to, is for STR operations to comply with the minimum number of off-street parking standards consistent with the city's off-street parking standards and design standards of the municipal code. And number two is all parking spaces required to be made available for renters of the unhosted STR, and at least one parking space made available for a hosted STR. Direction here is for council to direct, to direct staff to prepare provision with the requirements listed above. Multi-family properties was a council request to have staff evaluate whether deciding on allowances of STRs in multifamily residence was, was possible. Staff's recommendation was, one, to limit one STR permit per multifamily residential building with five or more units sharing common walls, and two, multifamily residential buildings consisting of four or less, when sharing common walls, should obtain one STR permit per unit when operating an STR unit. Council direction here is to direct staff to prepare provision with the requirements listed above. The next is STR density. Council directed staff to review and evaluate limiting number of STRs per neighborhood, business district, or street per block. Staff evaluated this provision and found that it does present some challenges and may majorly impact existing STR operations, and a more comprehensive study should be considered. Staff's, council's direction on this item is to confirm that this density requirement is not recommended as an ordinance provision. If it is recommended, staff will evaluate the impacts of this provision, and a more comprehensive study should be considered. The next is zoning differences. Council requested exploring different regulations for STRs in coastal versus coastal zone, non-coastal zones. Staff's evaluation, STR regulations specific for coastal or non-coastal zones may be problematic to enforce and require extensive coordination and collaboration with the Coast, California Coastal Commission to ensure feasibility of the regulations in the coastal zone. It could also create disparity and inequality within the STR program. Council direction confirmed that this coastal versus non-coastal zone is not recommended as an ordinance provision. If recommended, staff will evaluate the impacts of this provision, and a more comprehensive study should be considered. Minimum rental duration. Council's request was to prohibit hourly rentals and enforcing a two-to-three-day minimum rental period. Staff's recommendation was two parts, to, to have limits to two consecutive night stays for STRs, and prohibit events in STRs units when they have an active STR permit. Council direction, direct staff to prepare provision with the requirements listed above. And on to the regulatory compliance, it'll be similar, just the, the items that were listed in the third slide of this presentation. So permit limits, council's request was to restrict one STR permit per natural person. Staff's evaluation was, oh, sorry, was restricting STR permits to one natural person to prevent large corporations from owning multiple STR properties could create exposure to litigation. Council direction confirmed that a permit limit is not recommended as an ordinance provision. If recommended, staff will evaluate the impacts of this provision. The next was permit processing restrictions. Council's request was not allowing the processing of other city permits if the property is being converted to an STR without proper registration. Staff reviewed and evaluated this provision and found that holding processing of other permits while an STR permit is being reviewed is not practical and would not be impactful to ensure safety of STR operations. However, we do recommend a requirement for onsite inspections for STR permits. That would be the most impactful in identifying any life, health, or safety issues, and operational standards for STRs. At minimum, we're, we would like to prepare provision to require inspections for, from building and code enforcement for unhosted STRs, and a self-inspection per certain criteria prepared by the city for hosted STRs. Council direction is to direct staff to prepare provision that requires onsite inspections for STRs, and at a minimum, an inspection for building and code enforcement for unhosted, and a self-inspection per criteria prepared by the city for hosted STRs. Grandfathering permits. Council's request was considering whether to grandfather in current STR permit holders. Staff's recommendation is, one, grandfathering is not practical with the current annual renewal process, as it would only last one year. And two, if council seeks grandfathering in existing legal and compliant STRs now, we would need direction on specific provisions that would need to be evaluated. Council direction is to clarify specific provisions that council seeks grandfathering in to protect existing legal and compliant STRs now. The 24/7 contact requirement. Council requested staff to evaluate mandating the identification of 24/7 contact person for each STR, and staff recommends requiring STR operators to list a contact person who must be available 24/7 and respond to complaints by phone within 30 minutes and in person within one hour if an in-person resolution is necessary. Council direction, direct staff to prepare provision with the above-mentioned requirement to include the ordinance amendment. And with that, I will pass it back to Yulia.
So on the administrative procedures and compliance, I want to provide a little bit more information on the work that was done to enforce tax obligations and unpermitted STRs. In addition to the statistical information that we already provided early on, you, you have this information in your packets, we, we've done quite a bit of work reducing the number of non-compliant properties and shutting down and closing some STRs as well. So in addition to that, we collaborated closely with HDL, and again, HDL representatives are online, so we'll be able to speak more about that, but they just provided us with another batch of non-compliant properties that will be receiving notices of violations shortly, as early as next week. So we need to finalize the assessment and work with legal department to prepare those notices to go out next week. Staff also coordinated with HDL on reducing the maximum timeline for enforcement protocols. Again, that was one of the council's direction from the last meeting, that the council did not want to see this maximum amount of time up to four months. Again, keep in mind that this is, it doesn't mean that every non-compliant property will take up to four months, but that's the maximum allowed time for them to come to compliance. So again, in collaboration with HDL, we refined this process that would potentially reduce it to two months timeframe, and in two months, again, it's a maximum, right? So it's only for those STRs who do not respond to, to the notices of violations. So in two months, they, they will have additional legal actions. HDL also is working with the city about, on converting the city's STR permit application into an online form. So that would allow STR permitees to submit all the required documentations and submit the payment at the same time in, so it's definitely improvement in the customer service, and this is wonderful that they're willing to do it for us. And we also made quite a bit of progress with collaborating with Airbnb, and also VRBO, well, but mostly Airbnb on enforcing and streamlining enforcement regulations with the city. And I believe Airbnb representative is also on Zoom, I hope, so, so he will be able to speak and probably will speak on, during the public comments, and they did provide additional information that is also included in your packets as well. well. So that's quite a bit of work that was done in less than two months. As you can see, the council also wanted to, okay, I'm sorry. The next slide goes into administrative policies and procedures. And I want to highlight that Pacifica Municipal Code allows STR administrators to implement policies and procedures necessary to implement and enforce STR ordinance. And currently, staff is working on administrative policies to streamline this process and clarify specific process for suspension and revocation of STR permits. So we want to share two policy considerations with you here that we are, again, working with legal department to, to develop and implement. And the first one, and we also want to get council's input on this. So the first one has to do with the memorializing enforcement process that includes courtesy notice. And again, that goes back to the previous slide, the workflow that we worked out with the, with HDL. So the courtesy notice, 14-day deadline to correct, followed by the formal warning letter advising that the fees and penalties will be imposed 14 days later in notice of violation. And then the notice violation will be issued. So we're essentially eliminating another step and another warning letter in this process. And if no appeal is submitted during required time, then liens and penalties and/or additional administrative or legal precedents will apply as, according to whatever the violations are. And the second provision for this policies would be, is what we call free strike provision for non-compliant permit holders. So that would allow us to, to, well, STR operators to receive free violation notices and citations issued by police or code enforcement. And that would trigger the suspension or revocation of the permit. And if that happens, they would be ineligible for renewal for at least one year. So these two provisions, again, we, we are working on the policy to incorporate and wanting to get council's input and, and, well, additional discussion on this topic. So the next point under this section of the presentation is the council asked staff to provide analysis on adopting a moratorium on issuing new permits, which is, again, included in the staff report. And I want to highlight again, but back to original council's questions, and we will go over the procedures again, but the staff report to the council members' balls point. The staff report is more than 20 pages long, so it does provide additional information. So if the public members did not have a chance to review and read it, we encourage you to go back and, and review this information as well. But back to moratorium, so again, details are included in the staff report. Moratorium is often used to resolve the immediate threat to health and safety when the city wants to implement immediate actions to preserve the status quo. In this case, staff believes that this does not apply because the concerns raised by community about STRs do not necessarily indicate this immediate threat to public health and safety. And continued, well, that would, that the continued issuance of permits would constitute such threat. So this is why, this is why adopting moratorium would be contradictory to findings for approved cap that is now in place citywide. And also important to note that it would also require coastal commission approval to be in effect on coastal zones, so it's not really practical effective measure as well. And we are getting close to, to the end of the presentation. I want to turn it to, back to Breanna to go over the timeline of the new ordinance.
Thank you, Yulia. And as mentioned in the staff report, we provided a new ordinance timeline and just going through it here. So if we do receive confirmation and direction from council tonight on these policies and these provision items, we will begin collaboration with California Coastal Commission on each provision to ensure feasibility. Depending on the outcome of that, it would either be an additional study session for city council's consideration if there are substantial modifications to provisions. If there are not, we plan to schedule a proposed ordinance for, it, it does first have to go to planning commission for their review and approval. And then from there, it'll go to council for first reading, second reading, and, and be in effect 30 days thereafter. And this concludes our presentation. As shown here, the next steps are to hear from the community, receive and confirm direction from council on the refined STR regulations, and continue to ensure effective management and regulations of the current STR program.
Thank you. Before we begin public comment, I want to check in with you and see if we need a big, a bit of a bio break? Or shall we start and then take a break at a time certain, like nine o'clock or something like that?
I'm okay to continue right now. I think it'd be good to ask some of our clarifying questions and maybe take a quick break before public comment, but I don't want to make the public wait too long.
I understand. Okay. Okay. All right. Then let's, go ahead. Oh, you had asked for something. Go ahead. City manager.
Mayor Proten Beckmeyer. As, I think right now, we're going to go back and council's going to ask some, some clarifying questions on, on the policy recommendations. Is that right?
And some other general questions.
And general, yeah, general questions. So what I thought, I, I wanted to provide some information that I think will help the context for the conversation and what you're seeing in the staff report and my recommendations regarding some of these policy considerations. Because I, I think it's important for the council, I think it's important for the community to understand that context. And actually, council member Big Stick alluded to a little bit of this. So I just want to read this statement. So I have seen some public comments suggesting that staff's analysis about STRs is biased or that I have not responded appropriately to what council has directed. So in clarifying that, so for, for everyone's sake, I want to be very clear about a couple points in how this process works. This professional staff making recommendations to council, council deciding. So first, it's my obligation as your city manager to provide professional analysis and recommendations to the city council. That's a normal business. That's the way we conduct business. At the last study session, the council identified numerous policy considerations about the STR program and directed me to bring back analysis and recommendations for your further consideration. The report before you tonight does just that. It provides the analysis and recommendations for you to consider before directing development of ordinance provisions or revisions for, for council's consideration and adoption in the future. If the council desires more research and information, then it's the council's prerogative to direct me to return with further information before you make a decision. And as you are aware, the STR program assessment is one of numerous high priority council strategic plan items and has taken more time than anticipated due to the ongoing staff time required for the LCLUP update and other high priority items. The second point is that some have commented that identifying, and this relates to when we get into details about talking about why some, why I'm not recommending some of these policies, that some have commented that identifying how certain potential ordinance provisions would be difficult to monitor and enforce should not be a basis for a recommendation against such potential provisions, that this amounts to a biased recommendation. Implementation feasibility and enforceability, including financial and legal concerns, are important considerations for the council to make informed decisions about the program. And this report provides that information. Again, it's my obligation to let the council know if it is staff's professional opinion that a policy proposal is operationally infeasible or would impact the city's finances and why, as it's the city attorney's obligation to let the council know about legal concerns. It is the council's prerogative, again, to decide what to do with the information that we provide in the report and in tonight's discussion, and whether the operational infeasibility, financial impacts, or legal risks are important to your policy decisions on this matter. So staff's put considerable effort into this work on the STR program and has provided a thorough and professional analysis of the issues, and we look forward to receiving council's direction. So thank you for time. I just thought it was important to provide that context about this report.
Thank you. All right, council, where do we want to start?
I have a basic question to start with.
Okay. Go ahead.
What, what does our current ordinance allow? I mean, I, so let me just back up. I think a lot of the struggle and a lot of the comments we're hearing, a lot of the day-to-day complaints and, and even the acknowledgement of, of current operators, is that there are bad actors and, you know, how, how do we bring them into compliance? And so one of my question, and, and, and there's frustration because taking this ordinance is, doing this ordinance is going to take some time and, you know, we can't immediately put these provisions in. But can, can someone talk a little bit to our current ordinance? And I was reading section 9-4-4906, permit suspension or revocation. And our current ordinance, and thank you, Mark Steckbart, for sending this. The administrator may suspend or revoke a short-term rental permit after making a determination that the peremptee has violated any of the provisions of this article or is operating the short-term rental in a manner that is detrimental to the public health, welfare, or safety, or constitutes a nuisance. So there's no three strikes or, you know, anything. It just says it, it can be revoked. And, and I know there's a process that the city attorney has to do to do that. I know from our previous meeting, enforcement in general in Pacifica has been about trying to bring people into compliance first and being nice and asking multiple times. But at what point does our current ordinance allow us immediately to start, you know, the process to revoke or suspend? And, and is suspending any easier, right? So that, like, if there's a building code violation, and I, I know of one, and, but it's still operational, I mean, wouldn't that be a reason to suspend or revoke a license so that we're not putting people at risk who are staying in the property?
Thank you, Councilmember Bowles, for that question. So you are correct, the require, the section in the municipal code that discusses, discusses permit revocation and enforcement is in section 9-4.4907. And it speaks to suspension or revocation for any violation of the provisions of Article 49, or if the short-term rental is operating in a manner that is detrimental to the public health, welfare, or safety, or constitutes a nuisance, or has failed to renew their short-term rental permit. So typically, a suspension may be warranted if there is a violation that can be addressed or easily remedied. So your example of the building, building code violation, that may warrant a suspension until the short-term rental host can repair the, or address the building code violation. A revocation may be warranted if there are violations that have been identified, and we want to make sure we provide due process to the permit holder about those violations. So identifying the violations in a notice of violation. And those could be a violation of the city's noise ordinance or other requirements in the city's municipal code, or a requirements in Article 49. And then once the notice of violation is sent to the, the short-term rental host, then they have an opportunity to address the violations or correct the violations. If they don't correct the violations, then that could be an ongoing nuisance that would warrant revocation.
So you say ongoing. So some of these nuisances, even though they're in our code, it happening once wouldn't be...
Well, any violation of the city's municipal code is deemed a nuisance, a public nuisance. So, but they should be afforded the opportunity to correct the violations. And so that is part of providing due process to allow the short-term rental host, property owner, to correct the violations.
Okay. And, and just as a follow-up to that, so, so right now, if there's a noise complaint made and the police come out and they knock on the door and there's a loud party or so, what, what are the steps taken to, to let them know, you know, both the people causing the disturbance, but also the owner of the short-term rental? Are they notified as well that a violation has occurred on the property?
Right. And so do we want to have the police speak to that? Or do you want me to? So my understanding is that if the police are called out and they will identify whether there is or is not a violation of the, of the city's noise ordinance, so it'll be either founded or unfounded, and they will identify the people on the property site and explain to them the city's code requirements. And give them an opportunity to turn down the volume or come into compliance. Oftentimes, they'll come back out and, and just determine whether or not that compliance has been achieved. And if, is the property owner notified? I don't believe the property owner is notified unless there's actually a citation that's issued, but I'd, I'd ask that chief confirm that.
Well, and I believe citations would be issued on the repeat, returned to the property.
Right.
So on the first try, they give a warning. And if they have to return to the same property during the same party or whatever nuisance information, then the citation is issued and the code enforcement gets involved as well.
I don't want to get into deliberation at this point, but I do want to pursue this a little bit further. You quoted the municipal code and you stated the specific actions in terms of notice of violation, due process, a chance to correct the violation, and ensuing actions if that isn't done. Is there, or would, would, my question is, is there or would there be an opportunity to create, if not, a policy in our short-term rental ordinance that is aligned with municipal code but not municipal code specifically? So that, you stated, you don't believe in the owner is notified unless there's a citation. Could it be stated, if it's the will of the council, that the policy include, if the police are called, the owner is notified in writing? For example? Or would that be some sort of, be in conflict with the municipal code in some kind of way that creates some sort of difficulty or jeopardy?
Right. I, I think that would be possible to require some type of notification to the actual property owner. To be clear, the notices of violation are sent to the property owner, anybody associated with the STR permit, the property owner, et cetera. Administrative citations that may be issued by the police at the actual short-term rental site are issued to the guest. They would be, they would be issued to the guest, not necessarily the property owner. So the property owner may not be notified of that citations, citation issuance, because it's, it's issued to the guest at the property. So could you include something in, in the policies or the actual code that says that any violations should, should be sent to the property owner? Yes, that is definitely something the council could decide.
Okay, that's, that answers that question for me. Thank you.
And if I may add to this...
And if I may add to this, so this is why we had the slide on administrative policies and free-strike provisions, so this is exactly what we are trying to accomplish with this. So three notices of violations would trigger the process if we have a policy in place. And the current ordinance already provides STR administrator with authority to implement such policies, and that's what staff is working on with legal.
I have a question based on that. So is it possible to collect data on calls for service, not just citations?
So I just want to clarify, calls for service would include all calls for service for found and unfound violations?
Yes, for that specific address or permit, yeah.
Correct. But what would trigger the citation is the found violation.
Great. But I think one thing that's happening here is our data collection system needs to, we need to talk about that, and I can do that in deliberation. But my question is, is it possible for us to collect data on calls for service as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and founded and unfounded, because some of the complaints that we get that are calls for service are non-founded complaints. Like, some of them are definitely founded complaints, but someone singing in the afternoon is, because someone calls the police does not mean that's a founded complaint.
Right. I know we're not deliberating, but what I imagine happening is that the police call out, and maybe the one tenant that's there quiets down, but the next day, it's a new tenant, and they're allowed. And so if we're not telling the owner that there's a problem, there's possibly something they can do to increase their rules and their rulebook, or, you know, have better communication. And so we're missing an opportunity if that information is not communicated to the owner.
I agree with that. Okay.
Can we talk a little bit, so I'm, again, I'm a little concerned about what we can do now, knowing that the business license and STR permits are renewing in October. I know in the past, we've changed the application a little bit to ask for a little bit more information, and a little bit more information could, you know, if we go through that application carefully, there might be other questions we want to add. Is that something we can do tonight? Are there things that we could add to the application that don't necessarily require an ordinance change?
Councilmember Bowles, maybe you could give us some examples of what you're thinking in terms of adding information?
I don't have it yet. I mean, I want to go, I've got so many questions, but it just, is that possible? And then, as we get to a particular item, perhaps we can bring that up.
Yeah, I think that's possible to add.
Okay. And staff did share with us today the application, because it's not really online and visible, and maybe that's something that can be shared with the public later.
And I want to clarify that the application, we are still working with HDL to finalize the application for the renewal, so it's going to be done, like, literally any day now. So probably, we need to send out notices. And the plan was to notify all the STR permit holders as part of renewal packages that the council may modify the regulations. And again, as Assistant City Attorney stated, depending on what these regulations are, implementation of those regulations could be, could go in effect sooner or later, again, depending on how, like, we'll have to evaluate and determine when we can implement those.
I think, go ahead.
I actually have a question about that. And so the statement is that these notices are going to go out any day now. And if we're here talking about this this evening, and we're giving direction tonight, then is it possible to delay the sending out of those letters until we have more direction? Or we've given more direction? It just seems like, oh, we're just going to send this out, but we're actually having this conversation tonight.
Right. And we heard from the public many times over concern, and it's why we raised the issue about grandfathering. And I just have to say, at least from my point of view, because I feel like I brought this up, or commented on it in the last meeting, I wasn't asking for how can we grandfather? I was asking, effectively, are people grandfathered? If our process starts, our renewal process starts, before we're able to have the direction, even the, you know, full conversation with the council, and then direction, and then We're past the deadline for, not just for when they go out, but for when they're due back. And so the question I have on that is, you know, what constitutes grandfathering, whether we want it or not, effectively? I don't know if I'm being clear on that, but I didn't personally think I was asking for, how can we grandfather people in?
No.
And the way it read in the staff report, and the way it appeared on this slide tonight, was that, that was what we were asking, and that was not what, at least I was asking.
Correct.
And I'm not hearing anyone was asking that. Mayor, were you asking that question? You're muted. No, she can't respond right now. She's shaking her head, no, I think. Okay, we'll come back to that.
And if I could add, just regarding the timeline, so we intend to, for this permit renewal phase, put all of the STRs applying for permits on notice that ordinance revisions may be forthcoming, and that when they do become effective, so when council finishes this process, that those provisions that can be implemented immediately, and permit holders required to abide by, comply with, they will have to do that. And, you know, in the coastal zone, that's longer, because the coastal commission has to approve this. But I just wanted to comment that it's not like new permit applications get to go for a year without any changes, because those changes that are implementable mid-year, they have to comply with, because it's an ordinance that the council put into place. Now, there may be some provisions, such as if, you know, unhosted STRs aren't going to be allowed, that that would be more difficult to implement midstream, and we'd have to phase that into the next year's permit application after that went into effect. So, you know, but we can kind of address the practicalities of implementing that. But I just, I just mention all that because there's a concern about rushing this before the new application, and when the ordinance changes, the ordinance changes, and businesses need to come into compliance with the new ordinance provisions when they go into effect. And so we'll be working with the program to let them know.
Thank you for that. I have a legal question on that point. For me, just not a lawyer, I think about, what are the rules of the game? You know, what are the rules, what are the regulations under which I applied for a permit to do a thing? And if I read it, and I apply, I pay my fee, I do my thing, and then I find out a month later, two months, three months later, this dramatically affects my ability to do business the way I planned. I think what I'm asking is, is it the duration of the permit for which the rules, the ordinance, or whatever is in place at that moment count? What I just heard the city manager say was, no, if we change the ordinance partway through, they get noticed, and as of today, or as of 30 days from now, or whatever the notice is, this is the new rules of the game. And so I'm trying to understand timing and legal requirements.
Right. Well, I think as City Manager Woodhouse mentioned, there would be differences in the type of regulation that we're trying to implement. So depending on the type of regulation, we may be able to impose it immediately after the ordinance becomes effective. So, for example, if we were requiring, and I'm just going to use a simple example, that all units have smoke detectors, that type of regulation could go into effect immediately, because even though they have a short-term rental permit, they don't have a reasonable expectation that the city is not going to impose those types of regulatory regulations during the duration of the permit. But the city may not be able to impose something that has to, essentially shuts down the short-term rental during the duration of the permit. So if the city required only hosted STRs, and this particular property was not able to have hosted STRs, and would therefore be foreclosed from operating during that year where they were issued a permit, we may have to wait for that year, that permit to expire, before we can enforce that provision the following year.
And then I have one follow-up question, and then I'm going to let you speak. Does the council have the authority to dictate the period, the term of the permit? Presently, it's one year.
Right, correct.
If the council directed, could we switch that to three months? Could we switch that to six months?
Yes, the council could change that, yes.
Good question.
But would you have to let those people that have obtained a year-long permit, you know, basically get through their year before you implement that change? Yes, I would say that would be my recommendation, is that you allow those people that have been issued a permit for a year to proceed through the year, and then you can implement that change the next time around.
Okay, thank you for that.
But were you asking, like, could we say, like, any permits issued now would expire in three or six months?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Could we say right now, then any permits issued now would expire in three or six months, whatever term the council decides?
So the ordinance currently requires the permit be issued for a year.
Okay, so it has to be an ordinance change? That's not something we could do right now?
Correct.
Okay. Back, sorry, back to your example? I mean, the smoke detectors are required by code, so...
I was just choosing something very simple.
So I understand if you're taking away complete use of the short-term rental, but if you're reducing use by, say, you know, now we're, you know, we have a maximum number of people by number of bedrooms, so instead of 16 people, sorry, you can only have eight. Is that something that we can enforce mid-year?
I think the number of people, we'd have to see what exactly council desires in terms of limiting number of people, but that would not affect their, any investment-backed expectations that the short-term rental permit holders had in terms of renting out. I mean, I don't believe that there are many renters out there that rent based on people, right? It's...
Well, they rent a certain number of bedrooms, and obviously you can charge more if you have a bigger house.
Right, but they charge for the unit, and not necessarily based on the number of people that stay in the unit.
Okay, so we could, we could reduce their income potential, but just not cut it to zero, is what I'm hearing you say.
Well, I'm saying that the regulating on the number of people wouldn't necessarily affect their investment-backed expectations. So that probably would be a regulation that could be implemented immediately after the ordinance became effective. But again, we would need to see exactly what council wants to include in the ordinance and understand better how that regulation would impact short-term rental.
As we get to the end of this meeting, we can clarify, based on the direction we get.
I think people do look at the number of bedrooms, I mean, number of people allowed in the units, especially if they're looking to have parties. They want to know how many people are allowed. And if you say eight people versus 16, it makes a huge difference. But I think that's one of our regulations that we need to have, but I don't, oh, I'm not deliberating, okay.
Do we have an ordinance that limits parties right now? I thought Airbnb limited, didn't allow parties anyway. But does our ordinance now restrict parties?
The ordinance does not restrict parties, but we have a, the short-term rental ordinance does not restrict parties, but we have a separate code provision that prohibits loud and unruly gatherings.
Okay. I, yeah, I'm not sure if we want to go through the slides right now with those questions, but there's been, I've seen a lot of public comments that talk about the income to the city, and I know we've heard from Yulia before, but could you clarify how much money the city is making now in transit occupancy taxes from short-term rentals specifically, and how much we're collecting now in permit fees for short-term rentals? And then I know that the, and it's in the staff report, the permit fees are not covering our expenses of enforcement now, so if you can clarify what that difference is.
I also had that question, thank you.
Excuse me. We provided this information in the previous staff report for June 24 study session, so the city's, well, I guess, the STR's contribution to the local tax base is over $2 million a year. And that is combined contribution between the TOT, which is the largest tax contribution, so it's about 1.8 million, so I will have to double-check what the actual collection is for the previous fiscal year. Business license tax generates just minimum, probably about $12,000 or something like that, because our tax base is very low. The STR permit fees currently generate about, well, I believe last year, we collected about $290,000. And for the sales tax portion of it, because we, well, keep in mind that people do stay here, and they spend money in local restaurants and local businesses, buy souvenirs and things like that, so that portion is probably close to, well, between $150,000 and $200,000, I would say, just based on assumption. I believe I, we use assumptions of $200 per night. You saw the study provided by Airbnb, they actually said that they've done the study, and the number is actually higher, so it's $260-plus dollars a night.
And specifically with regard to sales tax, has there been any adjustment for or comparison with, if someone wasn't staying? I mean, if the place was empty, it would be zero. But has there been any economic analysis that you've looked at or that you recognize on the issue of a residential use of the property and sales tax generation versus a short-term rental use of the property and sales tax generation?
We don't have information for the study, but again, anecdotally, the reason why we stated in our previous report that the STR significantly contribute to revenue base, because people do tend to spend money while they're on vacation versus residents by grocery stores, that's exempt from sales tax, but again...
I go to restaurants, too. I mean, yeah, I...
I think we could, you know, I understand the discreet nature of, how much did we collect in fees? How much did we collect in business license fees? How, I mean, short-term rental permit fees, business license fees, and temporary occupancy tax attributable to short-term rentals? It seems to me those are discreet numbers that would be relatively easy to verify. I'm not so sure about the sales tax piece. It does say, as you stated, it's assumptions, it's some conjecture, understandable, but it just seems like we don't have a hard data source for that, if I'm understanding what you said.
But even if you exclude the sales tax entirely from this equation, we're still talking about close to $2 million a year.
Okay. That answers the question that you had.
Yeah, except, yeah, I just want, what I remember from the staff report before, I mean, we increased the fees because the enforcement was costing us so much money.
Oh, right.
And the previous staff report said the fees were still not covering the enforcement. I think it was short $40,000 or so. But I've also asked twice now, I mean, what is included in what you're counting for that? I mean, we're paying HDL, we're paying our police, we're paying legal staff, I mean, is, you know, and we're paying planning staff. A lot of those aren't necessarily accounted for, because they're not being billed to the city, right? So how do we really know what the enforcement is costing us? So how do we really know what the enforcement is costing us?
And I believe we tried to address this question in supplemental questions and answers to council earlier today. So in order for us to estimate the full direct and indirect impact of the enforcement, we need to do the full study. And typically what we do is a cost allocation plan and the user fee study, which we already have on our strategic plan to start this process in the last quarter of the year. So that's why we were trying to be careful in estimating, we know for sure, when we asked you during the budget process last year to increase the STR fees, we knew for sure that it doesn't cover the 100% cost of enforcement because it doesn't include everybody's time, including legal costs and review, my time, and everybody's time to review, go through this process, right? And that's why when we proposed this fee, we were confident that, well, it doesn't include the 100%, but it's close enough for us to fund additional code enforcement position. And that's what we asked you to do. So in order for us to estimate the full cost of enforcement, we have to go through this cost allocation plan and full analysis of the user fee study, which is on our work plan, along with all the other fees.
Right.
I understand all that. I just, I find it really frustrating when people are just telling us it's making all this money when we don't really have the full information. And just one thing I wanted to point out, you know, on the letter from Airbnb, which is on packet page 2120, it says, "A typical host in Pacifica has guests for a little over three months a year." And it also said 80% of the, or, sorry, I'm trying to remember. I mean, I think you, staff has said themselves that most of the properties are unhosted. So, I mean, if this is true, and I'd actually like to know if HDL is collecting this information, how do we know how much a particular unit is being rented in a year? But if it's really only three months of a year versus a resident living there 12 months of a year and paying dentist fees and vet fees and, you know, everything else, I mean, are we really gaining more money? You know, I'm not convinced we are.
So I'll add just a couple points here, and maybe HDL and maybe Airbnb can speak to that data because the information you quoted first, I believe it came from Airbnb analysis. The, what we, what we've done over the last year, we modified the STR permit application to include this question. So the full information, how many STR permits, properties are hosted and unhosted, would be available after the renew because we don't have the full data that we've been collecting this data. But as far as average occupancy rate, so maybe HDL can add a few points here, so I don't believe we, in the city, we track this information, so we don't have access to it. But I know that HDL probably has more robust system to do that.
Before we move on, I need a bio break. So can we take a break? That'd be great.
That's why I was bringing that up before.
Yeah, I can't think right now.
Okay, so we'll take a five-minute break and let's keep it to five minutes. All right. In terms of public comment, I have 36 or 37 or 38 cards in my hand. And Emily, can you tell us how many raised hands we presently have on the phone?
We presently have six raised hands on Zoom.
Okay. And we've seen it happen and it is, you know, the case, that sometimes people think of a comment they wanted to make and they put in a card a little bit later in the process or raise their hand a little bit later in the process. With the number of cards that we have, I would like to ask council's consideration for a two-minute limit for public comment tonight.
Agreed.
Yeah, so 37 times two is already over an hour, so.
Yep.
Okay.
And I don't think one's enough.
I don't think one's enough. I never think one's enough.
Yeah. I do want to tell people, I mean, I have read all the public comments, there were 138 pages of public comments, you know, way more than the staff report length. So please don't feel like you have to repeat everything that you've already said, and if someone else has said it, you don't have to repeat it again, too.
Right, okay. Then we're going to begin with Gary, I'm going to give three names and you can start to queue up. Gary Furlong, Kate Chinkah, and Gary Chinkah.
My name is Gary and I live here in Pacifica. When I was much, much younger, some of my fellow grade school students thought it'd be great fun to rush up to an unsuspecting student and demand, "Do you know who's in Lincoln's tomb?" The other student suspecting a trap would almost always answer no, to the laughter of the inquisitor. The answer is in the name. So tonight, when I ask, "Do you know what should be in a residential neighborhood?", the answer is in the name. Just because an unhosted STR is located in a house, it doesn't make it a residence. It's a for-profit business enterprise, a hotel where a home used to be. Every unhosted STR represents one less family in our neighborhoods. The city staff had no problem talking with other communities about their STR ordinances because these provisions are practically common now. We're not being inventive, we're not plowing new ground, we're simply trying to do what most of the communities around us have already done. Yes, it will require additional work and yes, it will be a challenge, but far from being the leaders in this, we're bringing up the back of the line. This decision about keeping our neighborhoods for homes should not be based on the fact that it will mean more work or the possibility of adding additional staff since this highly profitable STR program should be self-funded. It's a bogus argument to say that tourists and unhosted STRs add to the city's revenue stream. Every unhosted STR represents a net loss to the city's revenue when compared to that house being used as a home by long-term tenants. If you're talking about throwing away our quality of life and gutting our neighborhoods to increase tax revenues, then let's really open them up to businesses. Heck, on Pedro Point, one of our houses used to be a bordello. Can you imagine the tax revenues from that? Please do not walk away from our neighborhoods because it will require more work or it's a challenge. Reclaim our neighborhoods for homes, for residences, not for hotels. Thank you.
I will thank you to not clap between every single speaker or it will take three or four minutes to get through each commenter. There is a way to indicate interest in a nonverbal and non-time-consuming way. Thank you.
I bought a house in a residential area, not a commercial area in Pacifica. I did not buy next to an airport and then complain about the noise. I did not buy next to a refinery and then complain about the pollution. I did not buy next to a busy bar and complain about their clientele. So why does Airbnb feel they have the right to change my neighborhood into what they want? I read the letter attached to the paperwork for the ordinance written by Pacifica for Responsible Tourism. Please tell me how many of the signatures live in Pacifica? Maybe they do. Anna Tong, Russell Jones, Elda Kong, Wayne Tai, Alexandros Vardakostas, or Albert Jang? How dare these members of Pacifica for Responsible Tourism suggest that our city council and mayor are bending to the unchecked and overreaching interests of the wealthy? Look at them. They are Pacificans who care about the citizens here and were voted into power because they are intelligent and caring people. If that's the case, where do the owners of these STRs get their money? They're asking where the other people are wealthy and can have these places. It's none of their business. They bought these houses and have paid taxes ever since. I don't live near the water, but I still have an STR. Shame on you for treating our civic leaders with such disdain as if they were children. I would like to know what eight ordinances staff reviewed, where they were, and based their findings on. From the get-go, neither Pacifica's city manager nor its city attorney showed much interest in pursuing this as they stated that they already had a full load of items to do for this year. Something would have to give. Well, from the report I read, I believe it shows what had to give, when almost every item to pursue is reported as difficult to enforce, time-consuming, and of course, more analysis would be needed, that it looks as though some minds may have been made up. I would like to know who the successful cities, towns, or other entities are and how they manage to make it work and under the leadership of which individuals. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for attempting to right this ship. Big business has come to Pacifica and is dangling a carrot in front of us.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Chinkah and I live on Aspen Drive, and we have an STR up the street from That STR has been the cause of many sleepless nights, a lot of public urinations, vomiting over the banister, and yet we're supposed to tolerate that? One of the comments from one of the guests said that the deck was a little rickety. Here's a question to city staff. Who inspects these buildings to make sure that the decks, porches, and that are sound? I know there's a lot of concern over that, and some cities are having ordinances, remember what happened in Berkeley? Also, what about handicap access? All the hotels and motels in Pacifica have to have handicap access. I don't see any of that in the STR buildings or homes. It's not fair. They're commercial businesses, they are not meant, they're meant for residents, they're not meant to be hotels. So let's do something or get them out of Pacifica.
Thank you. Wolfgang Fernandez, Pat Gonzalez, Jeff Jones.
Good evening. My name is Wolfgang Fernandez and it's my wife Vivian over here. We actually live just over the hill in Millbrae, yet we love the sea and we have been investing in real estate in Pacifica for the last 15 years. We cherish our properties and we have chosen one of them as our retirement home back here in Pacifica. About a decade ago, we decided to list one of our properties on Airbnb. We currently have two and we're taking one out of the listing because it's not suitable for us anymore. We're driven by our passion to host and fostering connections within the Pedro Point community. We had the pleasure of participating in local events such as the Fourth of July Street Parties and other gatherings at the Firehouse. We connect with our neighbors and they help us keep things in order. In the 10 years that we've listed the house, we've only had one complaint of a party, an unauthorized party, and we were there before even the police got to the house and we canceled the thing. So we've never had any other issue before. We create numerous employment opportunities for local professionals, including cleaners, gardeners, repair workers, and handyman. We believe that this contributes to Pacifica's economic growth and stability. Our home has served as a venue for small family weddings, corporate staff retreats, and even our own church staff gatherings, and even as a serene sanctuary for individuals recovering from challenges such as cancer. In addition, we have hosted families visiting for holidays like Thanksgiving and Christmas as well as funerals. During natural disasters such as the recent floods, our property has also been a shelter for displaced families. Every guest receives a list of recommendations showcasing local businesses like Soul Grand Cafe Coffee and our favorite local restaurants, helping to stimulate Pacifica's economy. We take pride in our family-run businesses, knowing that it is not only providing a valuable service to the visiting families, but also benefits our community and supports important social causes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Kevin Woodward, and city council members. My name's Pat Gonzalez, I live on Aspen Drive, and we have a short-term rental directly across the street from us. Last time I was here, I've talked to everybody about the, on one trip, there was urination going on on my neighbor's house in broad daylight. I went across the street and confronted all the young men. They were in between their 20s and 30s. Another party, we had urination between cars in the evening and vomiting in front of the house. Since then, I've been here, I've complained about noise, I've had to stop people from throwing football, an actual football, into my driveway and leaning on my cars, all right? It hasn't stopped. That house across the street is 1,490 square feet. It boasts 16 people, 16 people in that house, all right? That's 93 square feet per person, 93 square feet. One morning during breakfast time, we were eating, everybody was packing up to leave. As they were leaving, I counted 21 people leaving that house, and that was early in the morning, they hadn't, people hadn't shown up. My son counted 22, all right? That's one person for every 70 square feet in that house, 70 square feet. That's a little over, what, eight feet, eight square feet for each person in that house. And nobody here can tell me that that's acceptable for the neighbors and for that house. I'm asking you, please do something to curb this. I asked, the last time I was here, when I left, I asked for a moratorium freeze on permits until we can find out how we want to address these codes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, members of the city council and mayor. My name is Jeff Jones. I'm 80 years old and I have lived here in the same house on Pedro Point for 37 years. For the past four years, my life and those of my neighbors have been invaded by a Canadian operating an illegal STR to make money. The city allows him to continue to rent out an illegal neighborhood nuisance that violates the city zoning regulations by housing guests in a windowless former garage. Three years ago, the city required him to build a retaining wall after his soil blocked Belfast Avenue to traffic. Three years later, he has still not done it and there are apparently no consequences. I have been subjected to 35 guests holding an outside party next door to me. I've had six drunken guests loudly celebrating their vacations for three days. I've had guests coming to my front door at 11:00 PM because they called the police. The staff's report implies that enforcing the ordinance or doing anything more to the ordinance will be way too complicated and moreover might undermine the city's financial health. But what I want to know is why is the city planning Pacifica's economic health around toxic activities that are destroying its residential neighborhoods? And why isn't the city enforcing its current ordinance and penalizing its violators? And why is the city sacrificing its homeowner's safety and peace of mind to allow foreigners and corporations to make money? On the recent report that was issued, the staff wrote, "Any regulatory changes should prioritize practicality and enforceability focusing on measures that can be efficiently implemented, upheld, and monitored." But let me point out that all of these things are already in the current ordinances, it's just not being enforced.
Thank you.
Would you please tell the city manager to enforce it?
Thank you. Randy Maynard, Bob O'Donnell, and Gina Rosales. I think it's Gina.
Hello, I'm Randy Maynard. I live here in Sharp Park.
Could you please move your mic? Thank you.
Gotcha. I live in Sharp Park and I spent the last 20 years working on my house. I live in Sharp Park, and I spent the last 20 years working on my house. I've spent a fortune on it. I've got it the way I want it. I planned to move only when I was dead and I was toes-up, and I've told people that for years. And now I live between three party houses, and you can call them short-term rentals if you want, but at 10 o'clock at night when they're screaming at each other, or the lady who was screaming at her telephone on the back porch of her house when I came here tonight. I yell at the TV set all the time, but my neighbors have never heard me yell, because I don't do it out on the back porch. People come into our neighborhoods. They don't do this in their own neighborhood. They come into our neighborhoods and do things that they wouldn't do in their own neighborhoods. And this is just irritating as a devil. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob O'Donnell. My wife and I are 51-year residents of Pacifica. First of all, to our mayor, we wish you a speedy recovery, and to our mayor and the council, I thank you for your work for the city. I know you do your best, and it is very much appreciated. I read the staff report about the STRs. I am as concerned as everyone. I've heard before me, we have a big problem. I looked at the staff report, and we're making between $1.7 and $2 million in TOT tax. Well, if you extrapolate that out, that means that we're probably having $16, $17, $18 million of profit from these owners. Many of them are absentee owners, corporations, and they've come into our neighborhoods. And I have to tell you what it really feels like. It feels to us in this room like a bait-and-switch. We've lived in our house for 51 years. We've been proud of our neighborhood. We've tried to be a good neighbor. And suddenly, three years ago, the house changed, and we now have this STR that is causing major problems in our neighborhood. We didn't sign up for that. None of us signed up for these kinds of issues that are currently in our neighborhood. They need to be changed. Other cities are facing the same problem, and other cities, specifically Daly City and Half Moon Bay, and other cities in San Mateo County have addressed this. Pacific is lagging, really lagging, in terms of dealing with this. We've been talking to you for over a year, and we're getting tired and frustrated. There's a Latin term, acta non verba. Let's act and stop talking. It's time to act. You need to sit down with your city council, I should say, your city manager and your city staff, and say there are some major issues in town that we need to take care of. You really need to do that. The choice is yours. You may find that the TOT is too important, and you may blow us all off, and we may just be written off as collateral damage. We hope that's not the case. We need you to act and help us get back to normal in our neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gina Rosales. I grew up in Pacifica, lived here 20-plus years. I went to Good Shepherd School. Actually, Ms. O'Donnell is my fourth-grade teacher. I have a long vested interest in the city, and my family loves it here. Currently, my brother and my family, we've decided to turn our childhood home into a short- and medium-term rental to keep personal family use during a lot of the year for us to come back and enjoy Pacifica, but also be able to afford to keep the house in our family for generations to come. It also helps me even just afford to continue living in the Bay Area. I'm currently in San Francisco, but our family comes back to the house very frequently. I just hosted a family retreat, a business family retreat, last week even. So the house means a lot to us, and being able to host short-term rentals really helps us. So my only ask is just to, please don't outright ban the use of short-term rentals. It will really affect families like ours that are trying to keep it in our family, but absolutely support... It sounds like Aspen House needs to be closed down, because families like this should not be living in this kind of madness, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lynn Shimamoto.
Yes.
Georgia Berry. And Jen Hansen.
Greetings, Pacifica City Council. You really have a job here with this Airbnb, and I've listened to all of it, and I really only want to say one thing about Barcelona. I don't live on Barcelona, but my friend Georgia does. And for the past year, we have found that there are safety and welfare hazards. Why would you put an Airbnb on Barcelona, almost at the top of a mountain, that is a dead end? Because directly across from this Airbnb is the road where there are three homes, and with all the cars that are parked in front of this Airbnb constantly, constantly, seven days a week, there is no emergency vehicle that's going to be able to get into that driveway, and because it's a dead end, the firefighters are not going to be able to go around if there's a fire. By the way, my son is a fire chief, fire captain in San Mateo, which is why, when I heard all of this, I told Georgia, "I have to come and speak to the city council." I've listened to all the problems with trying to enforce rules, and here's the message. If you can't enforce the rules, you have to do a moratorium. Do not issue any permits until you feel you can enforce safety and welfare rules. And take a look at Barcelona, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Georgia Berry, Jen Hansen, and Judy Sermitis.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Georgia Berry, and I'm the one that lives directly across the street from the STR that she's talking about. And I've lived there for 42 years now, and I have never, ever had any problem getting up my driveway or down my driveway until this STR went in. And we have cars parked up and down that street on Barcelona, which is a very narrow street, and a lot of the houses have very sharp turns into their driveways. We cannot get in or out of our driveways anymore. The house that I am talking about is directly at the end of my driveway, and they have online showed that they can put 16-plus guests into that house. Now, you can't park that many cars on that narrow street and hope to have any kind of medical emergency taken care of if we have to have it come up our way. I wish you would look at this street and take care of this STR immediately, because it's not a safe place to be anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Hansen, Judy Sermitis, George Sermitis, and I know I'm butchering that name, so please state for the record. Please go ahead, Jen.
So I planned ahead, and I wrote a speech, and then I decided to throw it all out. So my name's Jen Hansen. I've lived in Pacifica for 15,104 days. I've been collecting data for about three years and have been emailing and talking with council, and of course, you will get my original speech. Don't worry. I wanted to bring up a couple points. We clearly, with the staff report, have a lot of different ordinances on our plate that we're looking at, and I would suggest from data collection, a data collection point, that instead of looking at eight, 10 of them, however many there were, that we pick three and go from there. The ones that I would suggest are looking at unhosted, that definition, and using that as kind of our platform, and that would kind of reduce a lot of the bad actors really quick. Another one that I have dealt with personally is a fine structure for disturbing the peace calls. I know personally, every phone call that I have made to PD has been at least 30 minutes before I've called and after 10:00 p.m., and sometimes it'll take PD 20, 30, 40 minutes or an hour to respond, and by then, it's not a problem anymore. But I know when I called, it was founded in that moment. The other thing that I'd suggest is safety checks. I know I have made many reports to code enforcement about properties that look like there's safety issues, like swimming pools with no child fencing. They still have not been addressed. We, as a city, created a secondary position so our senior code enforcement officer can focus on STRs, and those are not being addressed. One of them, I believe, was on Larita. I know that properties have done improvements without permits, because I've looked them up. I've brought them to attention, to code enforcement. Nothing's been done. So that would be another one. So those three: unhosted, definition, and a requirement with that, a fine structure for disturbing the peace calls, and safety checks. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Judy. I live in Pacifica in the back of the valley. I'm here because I know firsthand how an unhosted, short-term rental can change the character of the neighborhood. I know because there is one, two doors from me, almost every weekend. There are numerous of cars lying on our street of the people staying at the Airbnb. They're turning in the cul-de-sac at all hours. They take up the parking lot, the parking space, not just in front of the short-term rental, but up in the down-open spots along the street. In front of a neighborhood's home, taking up the available space, some weekends it's up to three cars, five cars, seven cars, 10 cars, even more. And you have no idea how many, you know, sometime you could see 20 people or more than 20 people. So we lose count. We have no idea how many people actually stay there on a given weekend, except that it is a large number if they are a fire or need a full emergency vehicle in the area that is directly next to the St. Pedro Park. Space will be limited. I'm not against hosted, short-term rentals, unhosted, short-term rentals, opposed... I'm sorry, a unique set of issue. In most every case, the owner will not be living in Pacifica, and the goal, like any business, is profit. They are not the person simply attempting to live on the money earned from the short-term rental, because an unhosted rental means that they can afford the second-place leave, and in many cases, have multiple properties. So anyway, I'm gonna make it short. I'm asking, if our city council, I'm asking you, you know, if there's an issue, we need to suspend and put this in the ballot.
I'm gonna let her continue, because there was a distraction. Please go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're asking the city council...
I'm asking the city council, if we not... We have so many issues like when here tonight. I ask you to suspend that STD. And I ask you, if we could, we put into the no-member ballot. They us decided. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Could you hold on for just one moment, please? If you're gonna have a conversation in the first row of the audience, would you please take it to the back of the room? It would be helpful for the council that's trying to concentrate and listen to our public. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Okay, I'll follow up on Judy. My name is George Sermitis, and I live on Park Pacifica Avenue in the back of the valley. And I'm personally familiar with how short-term rentals operate. There's one two doors down from our house. Across from us is a widow who's lived in her house since the neighborhood was built, an elderly gentleman behind her house, a retired fireman on the other side of the Airbnb. It's impacted all of them. The noise is so great at times that it travels to our backyard. At one point, there were people out on the deck with a loudspeaker announcing various games and races. A big issue is cars. At times, there's eight, nine, 10 cars. We lose count. It's unbelievable, the number. And this leads to a cul-de-sac we directly about St. Pedro Park. There's not enough room there for cars, let alone emergency vehicles. I just want to end by saying, we're the ones that are really vested in Pacifica for the long term. I understand business, but the owners are looking at the short term. We're the long term, and we're vested in this community.
Thank you. Carolyn Harrison, Tom Dennison, and Arlene Zhao.
I'm Carolyn Harrison. I have a hosted Airbnb STR. I bought my home in Pacifica in 2012. One of the many best things about living here is my neighborhood and my neighbors. I've traveled extensively for work and personal trips all over the U.S. and the world. On occasion, I would stay at a traditional bed and breakfast. One in Missouri had rooms with antique quilts, and one in Tacoma was within walking distance to the water. Hospitality included being greeted by the host, receiving insider tips about the local spots, and enjoying a hearty breakfast in the morning. In 2019, I converted a portion of my Pacifica home into an Airbnb rental with a private entrance, bedroom, and bath. I thought this would be a great little side business and a way to meet guests from around the world and share beautiful Pacifica with them. Most of my guests were fantastic. A few came from out of state, and one or two guests were from other countries. To my surprise, though, most bookings were from right here in the Bay Area. Here is one example of a bad experience. A mother, her 16-year-old son, and his friend booked my place for the weekend. It turned out that the friend was his girlfriend. They checked in, and then the mother immediately disappeared and left the two of them alone for the weekend. It made me very uncomfortable, and I felt very taken advantage of. After that, I began to scrutinize potential guests more thoroughly, despite the pressure from Airbnb to book open slots automatically. Airbnb's one promise is a valid guest ID. So I raised the rates to reduce the chances of hosting undesirable guests. I became more proactive in reading guest reviews and messaging beforehand about the reason for their visit. I don't believe you get that with corporate-owned Airbnbs. Airbnb is a great concept if the host is responsible for their guests and the guests are respectful. It can be fun, and you can make a little extra cash.
Thank you very much.
More time is expired. Is being able to preserve the character of the neighborhood and the relationship with my neighbors.
And it would be helpful if you would email the council with your comments. Thank you. Tom Dennison, Arlene Zhao, and Albert Zhang, I think. Is Tom Dennison here any longer? We think not. Please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Arlene Zhao, and I've been hosting the Airbnb in our community for the past five years. And during the five years, we didn't have a single party that disturbed our neighbor. And we actually made friends with our neighbors, and we constantly check with them if there's something wrong. And basically, what we did is we have strict no-party policy, and we enforce the quiet hour from 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. And we also install a noise detector to monitor the sound level during the quiet hour. And so we never received any complaints about parties. Also, we have a two-guest-per-room limit. We provide a designated parking spot for our neighbors and the host, only a small number of the guests at a time. And then we also invest heavily to maintain our rental in excellence, to bring our community better. And for me, I talk to our neighbors, and some of the neighbors told us they don't have any issue with our STR, but they also wonder, during the holiday, they can have their friends or families to stay in our property. Yeah, that's... Yeah. So I hope you don't bind the unhosted STR, and we can set some rules to enforce all the bad actors, but we continue to make this one, make our community more open. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, city council members and mayor. First, I want to thank you for all your hard work and dedication to making Pacifica a better place for all of us. My name's Albert Zhang, and my husband Russell and I live in Pacifica, and we sometimes rent our place out as an unhosted Airbnb. Our group, Pacifica for Responsible Tourism, have drafted eight, seven proposals that would create a economy with room for STR while addressing all of the frustration of everyone has... having this rule. I'd like to share a personal story with all of you today. In 2021, we bought our home in Pacifica from a seller we never met. Through our neighbors, we learned the seller loved horseback riding. Unfortunately, she was injured and had to move away. We also discovered that she had deep love for gardening. Though we never met her, she'd become a part of our lives, especially when we, you know, sit in a tranquil garden she created. Russell and I had worked so hard to care for the grounds. In May this year, we received a booking. The guest reached out saying, "This was actually my mom's home," which she dearly loved. She recently passed away. And we were grateful to find out the home was available on Airbnb. We wanted to stay here while we scatter her ashes in Pacifica Ocean to be part of her final journey. Thank you for making this possible. We were deeply moved about this message. It's just felt surreal and humbling to be a small part of this family journey to honor their mother. We did our best to prepare the house. We baked a red velvet cupcake for them, and it was Mother's Day. Everything went perfectly, and when they left, the daughter thanked us again, saying, "This place means so much, my mom," and it was so lovely to come back to the place she called home. This is the kind of experience and connection we want to create with Airbnb, and it can only be created by Airbnb. So let me ask you, dear council member and fellow residents, why would you want to take this away? Thank you.
Thank you. Russell Jones, oh, no, Russell Jones, Alex Vardotakis, I can't read it right, Ramon There was a request to go last, but we don't do it that way, so I do them in the order that I receive them.
Last time I was here, I shared a little about me and my husband and our unhosed Airbnb. I shared that we live in our home, but often rent it out when we travel or when we want to raise capital for future improvements. I shared that with that money, we replaced the roof on our house, added solar panels, and now contribute more to the energy grid than we use. We replaced the fencing around our property and have done other major improvements. We care about our community. Since then, I've been told by members of the group, "Pacifica homes are not hotels," that they don't need to speak to us, that they know most of the council members, and that this matter has already been decided without us. Is this the type of community that we're trying to build? If you do this without listening to our needs, if you do this without understanding how damaging this would be for us, then you are legitimizing this notion that newcomers are not welcome, that change and economic vitality of this community isn't important to you. For anyone who came here with their minds made up, I hope that you will listen. If the city decides to eliminate unhosed STRs, it will lead to a crucial drop in city revenues around $2 million a year and lead to the inevitable reductions of already underfunded city services. But the loss would go far beyond that. I created a QR code that you can scan with your phone to just read all the positive reviews of our Airbnb guests about this community. They talk about the local shops, trails, groceries, and businesses that they love to walk into and shop at. You can scan this anytime. There are some in our community who believe we can thrive without a tourist economy. I do not believe this. A thriving, healthy economy is built on a diversity of stimuli. We have a cap on the number of units already. We need to focus on effective policy that makes enforcement pay for itself.
Thank you. Could you please state your name so I know how to pronounce it?
You're implying that I do. I think it's Alexandros Vardakostas.
Say it again?
Vardakostas?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm an STR host. I live 20 minutes away in the Castro. If there is one thing to take away from me, know that I deeply, deeply care about this neighborhood. My neighbors, met them immediately before doing anything, and as such, have never had a single complaint. I've never had trash sitting outside my property, let alone a party or something like that. And if you know what you're doing, you can stop these things. I'm in horror of certain stories of neighbors requiring police intervention, stuff like that. Thus far, the city's been fairly toothless in getting them out of town, so it's not surprising that these are happening. The outlawing the good hosts just carte blanche has really serious ethical and material consequences. We support the Pacifica staff's recommendations. They're the unbiased experts in the room. We also support a lot of the discussion around getting, attacking the bad hosts. For instance, if you want to add two bedrooms, two people bedrooms, absolutely. Like, that just doesn't affect us because we've been compliant thus far. So please do move on that front. The final thing I want to read from is, well, I want to say first, "We speak for many more people than are in this room. We support countless families who want affordable accommodations near our beautiful beaches. Please open your hearts." Quote, "This will be my Mother's Day treat, so looking forward to hearing for the waves, doing a little hiking at Maury Point, and watching the sunset over the ocean. Living in Fremont, so don't get to come here often enough." Another one, "We are planning an awesome little trip to the coast for my grandma's birthday. She was recently diagnosed with dementia, so my parents, kids, and I want to make sure we give her the most memories we can. Our kids are usually in bed by nights, no need to worry about noise coming from us." Another one, "My husband's family lives in Pacifica, and we booked the place that we could spend time with them. It's not easy to find the places accommodating of children as well-appointed as yours." Another, "We're so excited to get out of Fresno and visit my brother in Pacifica. This will be the first time he gets to meet their baby cousin. We love the space that accommodates my three kids, the older two being able to share a room with separate beds."
Thank you. Ramon McLeod, Pam Raymond, Marita Langland, Elda Kong. I don't see Ramon moving to the microphone, so I'll put that card aside. So Pam Raymond, Maritza Langland, Longland, and Elda Kong.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for your service, everyone here. I'm a resident of Pacifica for many decades, and I'm urging you to adopt an ordinance that allows responsible operators of short-term rentals to operate within limitations of a robust revision of the current ordinance. This community needs a balanced approach. I guess the one thing that is really important to me as a resident here is that we don't feel like we have neighbors, those of us that are surrounded by short-term rentals. And the other thing that I find disturbing is a lot of these short-term rentals sit vacant a lot, and I don't know how much revenue that's bringing in when they're vacant, but I do know that it seems wrong that a house is vacant that somebody could have bought to live in and raise a family in. So that's my one pet peeve with having short-term rentals, taking over the neighborhoods. I feel that it's not too late for Pacifica to tighten up and dispel our reputation of being a permissive city that attracts corporations to buy up existing property just to make them into short-term rentals. I understand there's a lot of people here today that are, that do, are responsibly hosting short-term rentals, and that's what I'd like to see more of. I think, I think we could do that, and I am confident that you will craft a good ordinance that everybody can agree upon.
Please go ahead.
Okay. My name is Maritza. I was born in San Francisco. Property records will reflect that I did briefly co-own a house in Pacifica, but it was over 25 years ago. I live on a budget. I work hard to stay in the Bay Area. I'm very attached to the Bay Area. My mom and stepfather are now living in memory care, so this is why I live on a budget. I'm managing two houses that I rent out. I have to travel and commute across the Bay frequently. I can't afford to spend over $150 a night when sometimes I just need to sleep. Airbnb, I often get to socialize, to meet the host. I have access to a kitchen, which I wouldn't have at a hotel. I am concerned about economic discrimination and gentrification and being pushed out as a native of the San Francisco Bay Area, out of this area. I am recalling what I read about Martin's Beach, and I just think, you know, we need access for all. My host asked me to come here, and so I'm here on behalf of her. She's older. This is an income stream for her. She's lived in her house for 50 years. She's also trying to just hang on. She actually lives in San Bruno, but because she said that this ordinance affects her. You know, I think you, you know, the gentrification will decrease diversity in the area, and I'm just a native that wants to occasionally see and smell the fog and the ocean. I think you should consider the morality of pushing out people who can't afford hotels. I'm a churchgoer and a practicing Catholic, incidentally. I also took pictures from the letter from Airbnb, which, you know, says that 60% of Pacifica hosts identify as women. The large majority say that, you know, the money is helping them with the rising cost of living and helping them to stay in their homes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm against bad actors, and I hope that you won't
Thank you.
eliminate STRs.
Thank you. Elda, Elda Kong, Dale Carlson, and Anna Tong.
Good evening. My name is Elda, and my husband and I have been hosting an unhosed STR in the past 11 months without any complaints. We bought our home five years ago because we wanted to be close to hiking trails, and for me, I just really love whales. But the primary reason we bought in Pacifica was because of the schools. We wanted to start a family here. Life has had some hiccups. Who knew it would be so hard to have a kid? And for some unforeseen circumstances, we moved across the bridge a year ago. We didn't want to sell our Pacifica home because we always planned to come back, so short-term renting was the only way we could keep up with the mortgage and property taxes. Visitors love Pacifica. We provide an affordable option for families looking to escape the heat from places like Tracy in Fresno, California. I've had the pleasure of hosting multi-generational families for the holidays, golf trips with friends and families, Father's and Mother's Days, and even celebrations for 90th birthdays. It's been incredibly rewarding to see families come together and make the most of their time here. Going into this, we were just trying to figure out how we can keep our home. I never thought we could also be helping four other Pacifica residents with jobs. Our landscaper and cleaner both live in Pacifica Manor. The contractor that renovated our bathroom is from Sharp Park. And an Oceana High School senior helps us make sure our trash is taken care of on a weekly basis. If a ban on unhosed STRs or a limit on the number of days an STR can operate, it would mean losing my home and the chance to move back to the place my husband and I love. And for those who may mention that STRs are ruining our school enrollment, when we move back, we may or may not have a kid in the school system, but I promise, we are just as valuable as the ones who do. A ban would hit hard on the four people that work with us. My landscaper and cleaner would struggle to make ends meet, and I'm guessing the Oceana High School senior, who helps the trash, won't be able to afford his video games. I really hope that after today's discussion, we can find a balance and work together to get the bad actors out, like the one on Aspen, and good actors and keep the good ones in operation. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dale Carlson. I began working on short-term rental regulations in 2013. And after some great success in San Francisco, I moved on and advised cities across the country in Canada and Europe in how to adopt the San Francisco model. A couple of myths about Airbnb and short-term rentals that I thought I'd address tonight. One is the notion that Airbnb and short-term rentals have negligible impact on the availability and affordability of housing. If I came to you with a proposal to demolish 200 units of housing in Pacifica and not replace them, I don't think I'd get much of an audience. But that's effectively what's happened by permitting both permitted and unpermitted short-term rentals. In Barcelona, they looked at a couple of neighborhoods that had very high concentrations of short-term rentals, and while the overall impact on the city was negligible, in those neighborhoods, 7% increases in housing costs, 17% in some places. Barcelona recently announced that they're going to ban short-term rentals altogether. This notion that Airbnb and short-term rentals bring added economic activity to a town. Our chief economist in San Francisco looked at this question very carefully, and he found that for every unit converted to a full-time short-term rental, the city lost, lost $250 to $300,000 in economic activity for every unit, every year. We had 18,000 short-term rentals in San Francisco when I started. It was costing the city billions, billions. Then there's the notion that some of these platforms just want to be good neighbors and abide by the rules. And I think you'll find that's not the case. And so platform accountability, giving them some skin in the regulatory game becomes important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Tong, Wayne Thai, and Brian Renero, and then Lila Renero.
Hi, Pacifica City Council. My name is Anna Tong, and I just want to thank you so much for your hard work on this very difficult issue and all the time you're spending. Before I start, I just wanted to point out that the fellow that just spoke before me, he's actually a paid lobbyist by hotel unions, and I thought that that's just an important piece of information that I wanted to share. So I am a passionate short-term rental host in our beautiful coastal town of Pacifica. For the past three years, I've had the privilege of welcoming visitors from around the world to Pacifica, and I hope to provide a little perspective on why we should continue to allow unhosed STRs to continue. First, I want to say that I condemn hosts that operate unruly STRs. I myself am extremely conscious of being a respectful neighbor. I have never received a complaint. I use noise monitoring to ensure guests are not disruptive during quiet hours. I screen guests diligently, and I never allow large gatherings. To address these bad actors, I encourage city councils to look into regulations like fines and primary residence, and a three-strikes-than-you're-out rule. The daycap and primary residence proposals would eliminate the vast majority of hosts, including myself, and unfairly hurt me with a life-altering financial loss, even though I followed all the rules. STRs are a way for families to experience our beautiful coastline affordably. For example, last month, I hosted a family of six from central California who were escaping a 115-degree heat wave in their hometown. They got to celebrate their six-year-old daughter's birthday with some much-needed relief by the ocean. Another group who visited us this summer said, "Out of the valley heat, and our grandsons have had a great time without breaking the bank. Thank you for making it all possible." These experiences are just two examples of how by allowing STRs, we open our town to visitors who might not otherwise have the opportunity to experience Pacifica's unique charm. This not only supports local businesses such as restaurants and shops and surf lessons, but makes our town an inclusive, welcoming place to visitors and not a nimbie town. I improve that STRs can coexist harmoniously with long-term residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Wayne Thai, Brian Renero, Lila Renero, Wendy Yum.
Hello, hello, city council members. My name is Wayne, and I have one unhosed STR in Pacifica. My wife and I purchased a home in 2019, and after spending three years and all our savings remodeling, we're remodeling it into our forever home. We had to move across the Bay and tend to some family obligations. In order to keep our living arrangements flexible and pay for mortgage and property taxes, we depend on short-term rentals to actually break even. You know, I want to acknowledge that the stories that we're hearing here in terms of the bad experiences with short-term rentals are just completely terrible. Like, I would never wish that upon anyone, and I would never want to live next to someone like that either. But they, you know, that's called, but I do, but I do want to address that these issues that, I don't normally do this kind of stuff. But anyways, as a host, I pretty much do a lot of things that prevent parties and bad guests in general. We do a lot of the things that Anna just mentioned as well, but one of the top things that we do is we actually check in with our neighbors very frequently, and we actually, they have our phone numbers. You know, we actually talk about, they're actually also interested in terms of like how we do things, just because of just a curiosity aspect. You know, in, I think the real issue here is really about the small number of bad STRs. And I think with some of the ordinances that the city staff and council members are proposing, we could really reduce those bad apples and really allow us are, are proposing, we could really reduce those bad apples and really allow us to retain the good hosts that are following the rules and also the benefits that those STRs are bringing to Pacifica ourselves. That's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members. I'm Brian Renero. I live in Pedro Point. I'm going to have to abandon some of my prepared comments to address some things that alarmed me. I'd ask respectfully, council, that if you could follow up with staff and the city attorney, I'd like to know that if a residence is known to be non-compliant with code, and that poses a human danger, that they need, need to be red-flagged immediately and they're not a three, subject to a three-strikes rule. There's not a nuisance ordinance, there's not a nuisance that we're talking about violation. We're talking about a known, a known residence that has been modified without inspection, and there's people that don't know that that, that resident isn't code compliant, right? They can't, they can't make a decision not to stay in an STR that they believe is fully compliant and inspected. So that has to take the priority. Now, I would also say to Ms. Carter, or Julia of the, the, the city manager, I want to make a point that the danger, the imminent danger for a moratorium is that we know that these are non-compliant, non-inspected, modified units that have gone through the process, and the owners are licensed to operate and feel that they are able to get tenant or customers into these units, right? That's the immediate danger why there would be a moratorium in the first place, okay? So the, the processing system was flawed. It's allowing people to rent out units that are dangerous and notorious, I might add. I'd, I'd also like to know what the follow-up is. For 400 Belfast, I see people in that unwarranted, unpermitted unit as early as this morning. Please, let's not wait for a tragedy to occur in these units. Thank you.
Thank you. Lila Renero, Wendy Yum, and Andy Maiman.
Good evening, council members and fellow Pacificans. Hi, my name is Lila Renero. I'm Brian's wife. I'm also a mama bear to my three cubs and a concerned citizen of Pacifica residing in Pedro Point. I echo much of what Brian said. We moved to Pacifica in 2012 because we love it here and its family-friendly vibe and amazing sense of community with awesome neighbors. In 2019, the house across the street from us was purchased by Marbella Lane, a corporation that turned it into a full-time STR. Marbella is currently, is operating at least 15 STRs in Pacifica alone, ranging in price from $400 to $1,000 per night. It's been a hellacious living, it's been hellacious living across from this revolving door of a microhotel. In addition to everyday nuisances such as parking issues to the point of emergency vehicles that cannot get through, smoke smell, loud parties, we have to cope with the constant fear of wondering what might happen with the next set of people that come to stay there. We have had to deal with guests who have dumped debris and thrown objects at our house, chronic worry about an out-of-control house party, or people who get confused and try to check into our home when their GPS prematurely tells them that they have arrived at their destination. When people are paying $700 a night to stay here, they have a sense of entitlement to act however they wish. We deserve to feel safe in our home. I'm suspicious of the three-strikes idea, which seems like it would make it even harder than it already is to get people removed. Nothing has happened at 400 Belfast in the years that we've lived there, despite the numerous complaints. When our current ordinance gives the administrator reverb permits, 400 Belfast has an illegal garage conversion, which is not safe for its occupants nor the nearby residents. Why has it not been red-tagged and shut down? I'm going to stop it there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Wendy Yun. Thanks for taking a great work on, you know, resolving like this complex issue. And I'm the homeowner in Pacifica. So I bought the house in Pacifica about like two years ago, because by the time I need to find a place, need to, you know, in between San Francisco City as well as South Bay. And I love the city, and my kids also love here, so we were seeing we can live here forever. But unfortunately, you know, my job has been changed, and we have to, you know, rent out the, our house in order to keep, in order to make sure we still can come back in the future. And that's the only way we can support it, our family, be able to, you know, still come back and also support all the different mortgages we need to pay, like every year. And my rental helps our community. So I hire local people for cleaning, repairs, and providing them the jobs. So my show rental create more job opportunities right here in Pacifica. And every local hire means our family getting supported. In those tough economic, economic times, it's a make real difference. And plus, our guests dining out and share their positive experience and also create a ripple effect. It's also boosting the local business. So my guests continually express their appreciation to the private, like, unhosted get, unhosted show Airbnb, like they had been, you know, experienced in my house. They had been continuing showing me the appreciation as a short-term rental, which allows them to truly immerse themselves in our beautiful city with their loved ones. So I got some call from my, you know, like guests, they had been, you know, enjoying the time with their, like, immediate family for their birthday party, as well as a marriage ceremony, as well as, you know, all the different gatherings. So I respectfully eager to continue supporting the unhosted show rental. I know their concerns, but those can be, you know,
Thank you. Your time is
Yeah, solve those issues.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Andy Maiman, Joanne Gold, and Hannah Steinbach.
Good evening. I'm Andy Maiman. I live on the point. I want to start by saying I support hosted short-term rentals. And I would note that all the benefits and great experiences that the unhosted folks are talking about also happen in hosted rentals. I'd like to spend my time here, though, on a couple of areas the staff report that need work: financial analysis and platform accountability. First, we need an impartial analysis that shows the net financial impact of STRs. It's not just about TOT. The second paragraph of the report, I read the whole thing, it reads like promotional literature asserting STRs are a robust, robust driver of local economy, boosting tourism, increasing spending, enhancing property values. Nowhere in the report establishes this fact to be true. In fact, as we heard, San Francisco found just the opposite. Unhosted rentals were produced a net negative impact, financial impact. Why do we think Pacifica's is, is different and would reverse that calculation? The point is hosted versus unhosted have very different net impacts. With hosted, you have a unit of housing and residents participating in the economy throughout the year while also providing a true incremental contribution to the tourist economy. It's additive. Unhosted is not. Second, while staff says they are collaborating with Airbnb and other platforms, it's clear voluntary action of a multi-billion dollar corporation is going to be in their own self-interest. We need to do what's in Pacifica's self-interest. We need to put them on the hook explicitly through the ordinance and require platforms to only list permitted properties or face fines. Places like San Francisco, in, in places like San Francisco, this approach has resulted in effectively outsourcing enforcement to the platforms, reducing the burden on city staff. Platforms are making millions on Pacifica. They should be held accountable. So please request staff to prepare a thorough, impartial, comprehensive economic analysis and investigate platform accountability provisions in the ordinance.
Thank you. Great timing. Joanne Gold, Hannah Steinbach, and Sophia Chang.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Gold. I'm a 25-year Pacifica resident and homeowner. And I've already submitted written comments that gave some examples of negative impacts that I've personally experienced from living across the street from a full-time, unhosted STR. So I'm not going to repeat those tonight. And for those of you who are here tonight who are, who own a single home in Pacifica and are occasionally renting it out to some lovely families who want to enjoy our beautiful coastside community, no problem with that. I am talking about the, the super-host owner-operators of multiple unhosted whole-house STRs that are clearly running full-time nonprofit businesses in our residential communities. They're operating homes as hotels and neighborhoods and are pleading not to be, not to be treated like the commercial businesses they are, because to do so would cut into their profit-making. By enabling these types of STRs without strong ordinances, the city and all of its residents are suffering the burdens. And staff's suggestion that to adopt stronger ordinances is just too hard or too hard to enforce is simply unacceptable. If I told that to my boss, I would either be fired or be given a very strongly worded performance improvement plan. It's especially
Thank you. Please continue.
It's especially unacceptable, unacceptable because other cities have adopted ordinances and have done all the heavy lifting already to provide a template, including Half Moon Bay, our neighbor, who has enacted an ordinance that serves as the gold standard, standard model for STR regulation. So I'm urging city council members to direct staff to put in place the type of restrictions on unhosted STRs that nearly every other city in San Mateo County has already enacted. And you have community members here tonight to support you in that effort. So please do the right thing. Lean in and let's do this together now.
Thank you very much. Could I?
Hi, thanks so much. I'm Hannah Steinbach. I'm a host of a hosted short-term rental, and in fact, I've been hosting for more than 13 years, not only in Pacifica, but before I lived in Geneva as well. I'm also an attorney. I'm a general counsel at a company, so I think I have to, I can provide some helpful feedback. What I would like to focus on is hosted versus unhosted, because there is a significant difference. Assume the house next to you goes up for sale, and Mr. Woodhouse, I look at you, I'm sure you would become very resourceful if that would happen to you, which appears to be not the case in the solution of this problem right now. Instead of a family moving in, now an investor would move in, and you would have to deal with all the nuisance that comes with unhosted short-term rentals. And we have heard from all the people here sharing their really unpleasant stories. So that would happen, and that is the exact reason why the majority of residents of Pacifica clearly do not support, undeniably, hosting or allowing hosts to rent unhosted short-term rentals. So the message is absolutely clear. And I ask the city council to enact laws that give power to the voice of the residents that you have been hearing here. It was crystal clear. To the question around legal issues around enforcing the laws that have been enacted all over the county, I don't think that's a problem, because there's obviously legal precedent. I mean, I'm not talking in my position as an attorney, but as a resident, so this is not clearly legal advice. So I just really want to also mention that there is a way to do it in a balanced way, to limit it to, for example, 90 days for unhosted renting of short-term rentals or properties. That would find the absolute balance. Now, I also wanted to call out that the staff apparently relies on data submitted by Airbnb. Airbnb is a great company. However, they are clearly biased. They are a public-traded company, and they have to make sure that their shareholders make money. So if you rely on their data, it is obvious that that data is going to be biased. That's clear in a conclusion to be made. So I look forward to seeing the laws that will be
Thank you very much. Sophia Chang, Mike Khan, Stephanie Robbins.
Hi, good evening, Pacifica City Council and mayors. First of all, I wanted to thank you for resurfing seeing Grand Avenue. It's amazing. And thank you for also the opportunity to share my perspective. My name is Sophia Chang, and I own a home in Pacifica. We purchased our home two years ago with the intention of retiring here eventually. We love Pacifica. And although we are not full-time Pacifica residents, we are active citizens of Pacifica. We spend every weekend playing tennis at Terranova. We have picked native seeds and cleared hiking paths with Pacifica Trust, Land Trust. My dog spends every afternoon chasing sticks and waves at Lindemar. When we are not active, working remotely in our home in Pacifica, we are also short-term rental hosts. Hosting is important to us because we love sharing our beautiful home with other family, friends, and visitors. And the extra income has allowed us to renovate our home and improve the area around the house, easements, sidewalks, and public paths. In fact, we have given away weeks of stay to our neighbors, who have used our Airbnb for important life events when they needed extended family close by, life celebrations, funerals, birthdays, and weddings. We ask that city council continue to allow short-term rentals and at the same time strengthen enforcement against homeowners and hosts that do not follow the rules. As an active and conscientious neighbor, I have proactively instituted many of the policies recommended by the city study: the limitation on number of people, limitation to two cars, and the minimum nights of stay, to great effect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Khan.
Lou, thank you for continuing your robust review of STRs. My name is Mike Khan. My fiancee and I have lived in Pacifica for five years. We love it. More robust regulations and more robust enforcement will absolutely go a long way towards weeding out illegal, unpermitted units as well as nuisance properties. I like the overall direction of the recommendations that I'm hearing, but I am personally disappointed that the one key issue I raised at the study session did not, to my knowledge, even get reviewed, which is the request to allow ADUs, attached or detached, to be eligible as STRs within the permit cap. We have an attached ADU downstairs at our home that we put in with the intention of renting out short-term to help, help with our mortgage payments while still providing us periods of privacy in our own home and the option for converting the space to elderly parent care on short notice. I get that housing is really important, but the fact that you are allowing so many whole houses to be STRs and won't consider ADUs does not seem equitable. You're discriminating against your own local mom and pop owners. I would appreciate a response from council or legal as your justification. Last but not least, I think fees should be commensurate with the size of the rental. Renting a bedroom or attached space does not command the same rent as entire homes. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Stephanie Robbins, Stacy Parish, and Alan Green.
Thank you for, oh, I'm Stephanie Robbins. Thank you for caring to hear from the citizens of Pacifica regarding the situation with unhosted short-term rentals. I want to reiterate, my concern is not against Airbnb rentals, house sharing, hosting tourists, guests in extra bedrooms, mother-in-law type units, the person who just spoke, which sounded like a hosted Airbnb to me. And other dwellings on the same premises as the host and resident is not at issue. My concern is for situations like my next-door neighbor who sold his house to what he thought was going to be a couple moving in to retire, but instead they used it as a full-time, unhosted short-term rental. This means that the three other families that were bidding on this house had to go elsewhere. It's hard to accept continuing to build more housing for the housing crisis when we see hundreds of our single-family homes used like hotels. It also means that my house is now consistent, inconsistent view of people I don't know. I now live in a commercial hotel area rather than a neighborhood with a community. I'm now planning to build a privacy wall because these people can watch all my comings and goings. I read the letter from Airbnb, and I find it interesting, the success they note in San Luis Obispo. This is a place where I actually rent a vacation house every year, where I also learned from being there and from online research, that all of those towns and municipalities are all very well-regulated, including, and this is a quote from regulation, for an example, no more than nine lots or 500 feet between each vacation rental. We're not asking for anything out of the ordinary. We have looked at San Francisco, Half Moon Bay, and others and simply pull from them. Please talk to our neighbors and find out what the neighbor cities are doing. And I just want to say very quickly, it does seem like that the differences between the reasonable hosts here and those of us who don't feel that Pacifica houses should be hosts should get together, because we're not that far off.
Thank you.
My name is Stacy Parish, and my other coworker, Kirsten, we clean Airbnb homes. And ever since the COVID, that has been the basic job that I have for life, to live, and to provide food and shelter for my kids. And, go ahead. And it comes to that, I understand everybody has the negative parts of the party, but there has been many families that we have come across that have just been there, and they're not And they're not able to afford a hotel that, you know, for four rooms for a whole family. And the family gets to stay together. And to be able to show, and we love cleaning, I love cleaning, because I like to be able to clean, you know, make it look nice and presentable to where they feel like they're coming to a home again. They're not going to a hotel. They like to be able to provide dinner to their family and cook and be able to be in a second home like it's like their own. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Green, Kate Cavendish, and Robert Georges.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Green. My husband is Alan Green. He had to leave, but he asked me to read his comments.
And I do have a card from you later. So I can only have you speak once.
Okay.
So you can choose. And we'll not start the clock until you figure out if you're going to do his comments or your comments.
Can I do his comments? And if there's time left over, I'll do mine?
You've got two minutes, and you can use it any way you want.
Okay.
Almost.
Oh, wait a second. He just said he might be, oh.
Two minutes.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Starting now.
My name is Alan Green, and I was in the room there with you. But I'm a pediatrician, and I got called to an unexpected, high-risk delivery of a newborn baby at Peninsula Hospital. Here are a few thoughts I want to share with you. I first moved to Pacifica in 1987, and I think we can all agree this is a remarkable place, a beautiful place. And when I think of others learning about Pacifica and visiting us, I'm happy about that. But I want people coming to Pacifica to be mutually beneficial, good for Pacifica residents, and good for our visitors. I'm a fan of short-term rentals hosted by locals, or at least managed by locals, because when the money flows, it flows into our community with all of the ripple effects and not draining us, draining out of us. And perhaps more to the point, if one of our neighbors is having a problem with a next-door short-term rental, I want there to be a real person, a local person, not a corporate entity that they can connect with and work to save, and work to solve it together so it can be truly mutually beneficial. Just a few thoughts. I wish I could be there next time. And I just wanted to say, I was in the meeting on June 26, I believe it was, with the California Coastal Commission, addressed STRs. And they specifically asked that Pacifica put a moratorium into place until we could internally resolve our issues. And we could figure out how to best manage this. But they did request a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Cavendish, Robert Georges, and Connie Menefee.
Hello, my name's Kate. I love, love, love Pacifica, and so does my dog, Phoenix. We walk around this area twice a day, and I know it really, really well. And what I'm hearing here is I am a short-term rental owner, but I've not rented it out for one day. Because I'm thinking about the future. If I want to save some money and be able to, later, after I finish doing what I have to do now, that I can travel and that I can still pay and afford to keep my house. One thing I've noticed, or I've heard, is that short-term rentals bring in $2 million of income. And I can tell from Beach Boulevard, we need that income. I also know that they bring in almost $8 million to our small businesses. And I love our small businesses. I am so excited to support them, and I love new ones when they come in. One thing that I find really egregious is there's lobbyists from hotels around the area that are sending out emails and calls to local residents saying, please, you know, come tonight, keep Pacifica safe, basically, get rid of short-term rentals. That I have not found to be true. In my walks, I've actually met people that are renting short-term rentals, and they are lovely. And they ask me, what do I love about Pacifica? And I get to tell them all my favorite places to go and to eat and what to do and who to support. And it's lovely engaging with these people, and it's lovely supporting the small businesses. So what I'd like to say is just like, please don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. I know there's some dickheads out there that are doing terrible things to the neighborhoods, and I am so sorry. But that doesn't mean, like, people like me in the future or some of the people right now are amazing hosts. I've heard amazing stories. So please, let's work together. Let's not make it punitive that they only have seven weeks a year, because I might need eight weeks a year. That's not enough. That's not going to keep the revenue coming in. So please, let's work together to get this much-needed revenue and to get these bad apples out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Rob. Right now, there's three unhosted STRs on my street, and none of them are listed on Airbnb. I bring that up because there was a letter from Airbnb to the city council this week, and they stated that 80% of Airbnb hosts in Pacifica only have the one listing on their platform. However, I spent some time yesterday and today going through the local Airbnbs. And after looking through the listings from 25 hosts, I found that only nine of the 25 hosts I looked at so far had a single listing. From those 25 hosts, there's a total of 57 listings in Pacifica and 118 listings overall. That's an average of more than two listings per host in Pacifica, an average of more than four listings on the platform per host. One of the hosts even had four four-bedroom homes, two five-bedroom homes, and two six-bedroom homes, all listed in Pacifica from one host. Airbnb's letter also claimed that their properties in Pacifica are occupied an average of three months per year or roughly a quarter of the year. I think we should ask as a community if local restaurants and cafes, grocery stores, shops, and our local tax revenues would be better off by having these unhosted STRs turned into homes for local families and to be occupied 12 months of the year instead of only three months. Airbnb and their hosts want us to believe that we would lose significant tax revenue from these unhosted STRs if they are limited and/or eliminated. But I don't think that's accurate. And it also doesn't ask the question of what we lose as a community by not having constant neighbors in the homes next door to us and not having as many local kids in our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Connie Menefee, Cindy Abbott, Kaitlin Quinn.
I used to look across the street at a well-tended yard. Now I look at a neglected eyesore owned by some strangers who don't give a damn about our neighborhood or its residents. Two weeks ago, the neighbor who lives next door to this unhosted STR was walking his dog on the sidewalk adjacent to the property's overgrown weeds when he and his dog were attacked by yellow jackets nesting in the ground. As his hand swelled up to the size of a mitten, he drove himself to the Lindemar Fire Station, where they had to cut off his wedding band. While that finally got Marbella Lane's attention, it still took several days for them to send out pest control. I have great respect for the city manager and the hard-working staff who are trying to make this city function on a shoestring budget. However, this staff report makes too many concessions because of economic and enforcement challenges, increased STR permit fees and violation and inspection fees to make the program self-funding. As for the letter purportedly authored by PRT and obviously ghost-written by Airbnb, it's a self-serving propaganda piece that lacks all credibility. It ignores the deceptive practices being utilized by investors, listing agents, and property managers. Please assign no weight to it. To paraphrase Shakespeare, "Unhosted STRs are a plague on all our houses." Do not abdicate your responsibility to the people who live in Pacifica. Strengthen the ordinance and enforce it. And as Tiger said in June, "If you want to operate a hotel, then buy a hotel."
Thank you. Cindy Abbott, Kaitlin Quinn, Diane Emerson.
Bring that down. Cindy Abbott, balance. That's a word we've heard a lot in this past week. And I'm really proud to say that that's something that was always on the mind with the grassroots organizing efforts of Pacifica Homes Are Not Hotels, fair and balanced. The draft ordinance, despite what some seem to have been told, is not an outright ban on short-term rentals. Key elements are: no problems with hosted short-term rentals. Operate as much as you would like. Unhosted rentals for a limited number of days. Short-term rentals to be operated only out of a primary residence and operated by a natural person. These mirror the feedback provided by the California Coastal Commission. On June 13, Pacifica staff went to the CCC meeting in Morrel Bay and said they were there to hear from the commissioners, to hear your feedback, to hear your expertise. Commissioner Mike Wilson expressed concern that a cap was being brought forward versus a moratorium, noting that it was being seen as a massive experiment in the commercialization and commodification of our housing. He recommends unhosted or hosted as a much less impactful way to apply this way of accommodation. Commissioner Newsom shared how she and her son had been removed from their home when it turned into a short-term rental and also suggested strong regulation. Commissioner Escalante added her agreement, noting, "It's time for us to really be a lot more proactive, making sure that we stop the bleeding of housing units to more STRs." Commissioner Cummings said, "I want to express deep concern with short-term rentals and the impacts. We have a lot of new information. The benefit of hosted rentals and limiting the amount of short-term rentals is there." And Dan Carl, their regional director, said, "We've seen primary residency requirements, and we've definitely seen the short-term rental per natural person. Let's get it done, Pacifica. Everybody else has."
Thank you very much. Kaitlin Quinn, Diane Emerson, Igor, last initial K.
Hi, Kaitlin Quinn, West Shore Park. Before, so I just want to, I want to address a falsehood that was just stated. I am a member of Pacifica Homes Are Not Hotels, and I had a lovely meeting for about an hour yesterday with Mr. Ty. I met him and his dog, Miles, at the pier. So it's not true that we're not willing to speak. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Ty and I have agreed to speak again. So, yeah, just want to say that. And in terms of truth, here's my truth. It's a 10-page, single-spaced document. In it are 50 instances of being woken up by checking in and checking out and other noise, with 30-plus of those happening between the hours of midnight and 5:00 a.m., three loud parties trespassing 50-plus times, with one group of STR guests actually helping themselves to our property's water hose, five instances of guests coming onto our property to dump their unsorted trash into our bins, 10 instances of the STR's trash not being put out for collection, leaving us to deal with garbage sitting and festering for weeks, one instance of a dog being abandoned with no food and scant water in the STR's backyard, a gas leak at the STR that we discovered when we smelled the gas, and when PG&E arrived, neither they nor the STR's guests could reach the management company by phone, and an instance where a Pacifica police officer came to our home the day after Christmas to ask if we had seen, quote, "any activity involving children and drugs at the Airbnb next door." For some reason, the city allows this public and private nuisance to continue to operate. Why? Why? City council, please put in place the restrictions on unhosted STRs. Pacifica Homes Are Not Hotels is suggested. Every other city has them virtually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The time being 10:52.
Yes.
I would like to move that we extend the meeting to 12:30.
Okay. I'm all right. Please vote.
Roll call.
I mean, roll call, vote, please.
With a motion to extend the meeting to 12:30 made by Councilmember Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember Beer. Start the roll call with Councilmember Bowles.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Not you, and you go home.
Yes.
You go home.
And the vote passes unanimously.
We will continue with public comment. For everyone's awareness, I have four cards. I have two cards that I called for people who did not respond. So I don't know if they're in the room or not. And how many hands do we have raised, please, Emily?
We have nine hands raised.
All right, I'm going to limit the call-ins. If your hands not raised in the next two minutes, Emily will keep track of time, and Emily will draw a line where that number is. Right now, Emily, what is the last hand raised? The four digits or the name?
What is the name of the last hand raised right now?
Correct.
It is Sheree Chan.
Sheree Chan is the last hand raised. Anybody who gets in in the next two minutes, and Emily will keep the time, will also be permitted to speak on the Zoom call-in. We're going back to public comment, and with Diane Emerson, then Igor Kay, then Harold, Geraldo Dalton, and Sharon Go. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Diane Emerson, I'm a 45-year resident of Pacifica. I did read the staff report. One thing that caught my attention that I wanted to quote was an indication that the goal of the short-term rental program is to balance it with the needs and quality of life of the residents of Pacifica. I think that's a very strong responsibility that this council has. And while I appreciate the passion behind the hosts here that have come here today, it seems to me that the obligation of this council is for the needs of the residents of Pacifica, not the needs of the tourists that come to town. So I wanted to reinforce that fact. I also wanted to make the same observation others have, that a lot of the, what I saw in the staff report was really more the how we can't do this or we don't want to do this. And there really is no balance, from my perspective, in terms of what are the needs of the residents we're trying to meet. I appreciate the fact that there's better customer service for the permit holders. What I'm hearing from other folks that live across the street from short-term rentals is the customer service for the residents of this town has not been improved when it comes to short-term rental enforcements. I wanted also just to say, we didn't ask to have STRs in our neighborhood. We didn't ask for a commercial hotel establishment to be next door. And we didn't ask to have this in our neighborhoods in order to basically keep the city financially healthy. So I do think that an increased perspective on the needs of the residents when you're looking at enforcement in this ordinance is particularly critical. And finally, it isn't just the party houses that cause the problems. If there are 170 STRs in town, there are probably 1,700 households that live next door that are suffering through this. And I think those people and the residents of those 1,700 units need to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Igor?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Igor Plaschitzky. I live in Pacifica about six and a half years and really enjoy this community. I have three kids. The oldest one, 21 years old. And he came to me and said one day that you should understand that I will be moving out. But I will be not moving out from the home. I will be moving out from Bay Area because I will not be able to afford to live here unless you die. So it was a pretty clear statement. The guy made the mess. Unfortunately, today, with all my respect, the city presentation was missing the numbers. We have $2 million revenue, but we do not see actual number, how it's projecting the profit. I believe we are inadequate. It's not enough. We start to discuss Airbnbs as unhosted units. And in the middle of discussion, we start to discuss the total Airbnb. Hosted Airbnb, it's what's required for many people to be able to afford houses in our beautiful city right now. It's hard to survive. But unhosted, that requires strong regulations. I don't believe that people who is giving permits cannot justify and see that there is 15 permits to one name or two permits to one name, more than one. So it's already should raise a flag. Second, we need to have enforcement, and real enforcement on unhosted. And when we talk about like three strikes, it will not work. There is one strike and serious strike. And please, don't make Pacifica to became Palm Springs when it's blocks, blocks of Airbnb and VRBO. Thank you.
Thank you. Geraldo Dalton, Sharon Go. Haroldo Dalton, Sharon Go, Peter Garanani, Nani. Peter Garanani. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Haroldo Dalton. I live here in Pacifica with my wife and my two beautiful kids, seven-year-old and two-year-old. We live right here on Pacific Avenue. Just around my house, there's nine units of Airbnb. And I just want to remind everyone, for all the unhosted folks that are here in the room, we are here in Pacifica, we live here every day. I send my kids to school. One of my kids, it's daycare here in Pacifica. The other kid goes to Valamar. We donate to the school. School funding, it's decreasing because less and less families are living here. Also, I just want to bring up a couple points for reflection. Why high-income areas like Carmel by the Sea or Atherton have banned Airbnbs or not allowed short-term rentals for less than a month? It seems that they're not worried about litigation. And two, how would you feel having your seven-year-old kid playing outside? Would you feel safe knowing there's nine units of Airbnbs around you and all that turnover? And lastly, you know, I had problems, especially when we have the, a lot of storms and high winds. You know, my trash and everybody else's trash flies everywhere. Myself and my neighbors, we pick up, right? But for the Airbnbs, there's nobody there. I would not mind pick up my neighbor's trash, but it kind of like upsets me when I have to pick up these corporations' trash that's all over the place, right? And one last thing, from my perspective, short-term rentals, unhosted short-term rentals, even their compliance, do not add anything to the community. I'd rather have real neighbors.
Thank you.
I'm the Pacifica City Council. My name is Sharon. I'm a short-term rental operator for six years, and I deeply care about the community. I take serious steps to ensure a positive relationship with my neighbors and prevent issues. I ask a series of screening questions, such as number of visitors, cars, and reason to stay to potential guests, to avoid troublemakers or party guests. These help me ensure that those staying in my property are respectful and won't cause disturbance to the neighbors. Being a neighbor myself, I know firsthand how frustrating it can be to deal with noise and disturbance. I wouldn't want that to happen to my neighbors, so I make it a priority to ensure my guests don't disturb anyone in the neighborhood. If a neighbor reach out to me about anything concerning the house, whether it's urgent or not, I make sure either myself or my team handles it immediately. I want to, I want my neighbors to know they can count on me to address any issues right away. I committed to keeping my neighbors happy while renting the property short-term. A good relationship with the community is essential, and I work very hard to maintain that. I think short-term, I believe that the short-term rental operators should host community meetings to share solutions and support each other, especially if a property is facing challenges. By working together, we can find our ways to operate our business in compliance and with respect to the community. Lastly, bad actors should be educated and fined, even eliminated from the hosting community. But for the rest, who's doing a good job maintaining a good standard, please continuously giving them the permission to do their operation, hosted and unhosted, as these can be a very important part of their home daily income, including the vendors that it's in the operation, such as local managers, cleaners, and maintenance workers. Thank you.
Hi, Peter Garanani, West Shore Park. I'm also a member of the Community Emergency Response Team, to refer back to your earlier point. I think there's a couple of questions we've got to ask ourselves. We've got to ask ourselves, do the economic, do the microeconomics that apply in San Francisco and the accounting that applies in San Francisco, 20 minutes up the road, does that apply in Pacifica? Or do we live in a magical vortex of hobbits and elves where microeconomic rules don't apply? It's not the only economic study. I have in my hand an economic study from the Economic Policy Institute, and it proves in multiple studies, 10 or 20 studies around the world, that unhosted STRs do not bring money into cities versus long-term residents spending money every day. And that TOT taxes that are collected from unhosted STRs, if they weren't there, the people stay in hotels, and the TOT taxes still collected, and is collected more effectively. The 7 to 9 million is a made-up number by the city. With the utmost respect to the hard-working staff, there was no economist's study, there was no statistical analysis to prove causation or correlation, they invented it. These economic studies say that long-term residents actually spend money. And that, you know what, if some tourist spends some money, that's icing on the cake, that's great. We support hosted STRs. But if there's no unhosted STRs, those people live, stay in hotels, and they still spend the imaginary $8 million. That's the reality of it. The question is, do we want unhosted SDR members to have special extraordinary rights over all the rest of us? The right to remove a house, turn it into, circumvent zoning laws, turn it into a hotel, circumvent all the laws, building codes, fire codes, safety codes, identification, circumvent it, turn it into a hotel, impact eight neighbors around you. Special extraordinary rights versus the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I will call one more time Tom Dennison or Ramon McLeod. And they are not here. Emily, we're turning to the phone. I'd like to know how many more hands were raised after, during the two minutes after Sheree Chan?
After the two minutes?
No, I mean during the two minutes that I gave the warning.
Oh, we received one more raised hand during the two minutes.
So we have nine?
So it was, it was, so it was originally nine, so there were 10 received in total.
Very good. We have 10 more to go then, and we will listen to them now. Could you please call the first person?
And just a note that there was some shifting in the hands being raised, so I have a list that I've written down of the names, but it may differ from what's on the Zoom.
Okay, I trust that you have it well in hand.
Okay. The first raised hand is for Samantha Redding.
Please unmute and go ahead, Samantha. Emily, can you see if she's unmuted?
She is muted.
And you unmute by doing what, Emily?
Star nine, I believe.
Star nine, is that right, City Clerk Coffee?
Yes, star nine, or clicking the unmute button. Star nine to unmute if you're on your phone, or please click the unmute button. Emily, could we please go to the next person, and we'll circle back to Samantha Redding?
The next person is Noah Suarez-Sikes.
Go ahead, please.
All right. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Tremendous. Okay. All right. So, good evening, City Councilmembers, Mayor Vatalas. My name is Noah Suarez-Sikes, and I'm an organizer of Better Neighbors L.A., a coalition of hosts, tenants, housing activists, and community members that conducts data analysis and research on the short-term rental industry and its impact on long-term housing. We believe that true home sharing and hosted-only STRs is the best way to balance the protection of long-term housing for residents and affordable coastal access for visitors. The rapid growth of the STR market in Pacifica has meant a corporatization of housing at the expense of available housing options for long-term residents. The number of unhosted STRs more than doubled from 67 in May 2017 to 173 in March 2023. The 2023 to 2031 Pacifica Housing Element recognizes that Pacifica faces economic pressures to convert a portion of its housing stock to short-term vacation rentals, that's a direct quote, which can lead to direct economic consequences for residents. According to a study by McGill University Professor David Walksmith, the proliferation of STRs in Los Angeles caused an $810 a year increase in the average rent. A similar study conducted in Irvine, which banned STRs in residential zones, shows an average decrease of $1,012 a year in rent as a direct consequence of the ban. That's on top of the economic consequences, folks have pointed out, of hollowing out the long-term tax base of the city in favor of corporate accommodations for tourists. The recommendations approved by city staff are insufficient to properly regulate the growth of unhosted STRs and would not meet the standard for stronger regulations that the Coastal Commission requested from the city at the June 13th meeting. Staff has largely claimed that they lack the capacity to enforce regulations on unhosted STRs, as neighboring cities like Half Moon Bay have been able to do, which can be remedied through strong enforcement. Santa Barbara, which initially budgeted $1.75 million on STR enforcement, has to date only spent $99,000 on enforcement while collecting over $500,000 through fines and permitting. To make sure that Pacifica's regulations meet the needs of the community, BNLA urges city council to amend the current ordinance to include a definition of unhosted and hosted short-term rentals, primary residency requirements for hosts, a limit of one short-term rental per natural person, and a 69%.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired. Emily, could we have the next person, please? Thank you.
The next person is Suzanne Moore.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening, and thank you, staff, for your report on short-term rentals, which summarized advantages to an effectively managed STR program. It's reassuring to know that other communities have existing programs. I want to address justification for a moratorium on short-term rentals. Staff mentioned that the advantage to a moratorium is to assure that everyone understands the implications of the program. To qualify, an issue must demonstrate a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Some would suggest that the personal narratives from the community this evening are just qualifications. However, our community lacks data on rentals and housing impacts. We know from the needs assessment in Pacifica's housing element that Pacifica's rental market is constrained. This affects our most vulnerable: elders on a fixed income, low-income families, the disabled, and essential workers. We know Pacifica residents have been displaced due to rising housing costs, and we know that 75% of Pacifica's homeless were formerly housed here. But without rental and eviction registries, we lack the necessary data to quantify the impact STRs have on the housing affordability crisis, a very grave threat to our public health and welfare. I also want to take a moment to address the level of inspection. I've been told that Pacifica lacks a robust inspection team. This team, I think, often focuses on complaint-driven alerts from the community. Since many residents feel uncomfortable making complaints, I've been told that substandard conditions may exist in a variety of rental properties. Although today, Pacifica is addressing the appropriate level of inspections for STRs, our community may have needs to inspect other levels of Pacifica housing. Everyone in Pacifica deserves safe, affordable housing. Let's do what we can to create an effectively managed STR ordinance. I'm encouraged that Pacifica residents have stepped forward with housing concerns, but let's not stop with STRs. Let's work in other truly important ways that Pacifica can.
Thank you.
The next raised hand is for Janine Mercard.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Janine Mercard, and I've lived in Pacifica for 30 years now, and I consider this my home. A couple of years ago, I moved into a larger house here in Pacifica, and like many others, my short-term rental actually helps me afford to stay here in Pacifica in this beautiful place. And so I do thank you so much for the opportunity to continue this discussion on this important topic. And while I appreciate that you have really listened and heard us last month, especially those of us who are in compliance, on-site, and hosted, and not among the properties or on the problem list, I do want to just raise one concern that I read in the policy documentation that you're having under consideration, and that is around the permit fee scheduled that would maybe not take into account some of the differences between short-term and long-term, or rather, the hosted versus unhosted rentals. So, for example, we're completely compliant, we're on-site, it's just a portion of our home that we rent out, and we need that income in order to make ends meet here. But suddenly last year, the short-term rental permit fee went from $150 to $1,622 without notification, without an email, without anything, and that's about the highest in the nation and the state. I think second only maybe to Palm Springs area, where they've got huge multimillion-dollar homes. And so while I could speak on that more, and I don't have a lot of time to do that, that fee I find to be exorbitant, and very difficult to meet on top of it, along with all the other costs associated with, you know, having this short-term rental, when it's really just a small part of my home. We already pay business license fee, we pay taxes, and business has been really, really slow this year, and it makes it really challenging in addition. And so maybe for some of the smaller operators, some of us compliant folks, hosted, and where you don't have any additional enforcement, maybe this fee can be reduced. As I understand it, it is intended to pay for that higher cost of administration and enforcement, but if I am compliant and I'm hosted, I'm smaller.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Betty Duran.
Betty, if you can unmute your phone with star nine, or press your microphone button on your computer.
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I actually dozed off. I sincerely apologize.
No problem.
I, thank you for calling my name. I'm just not able to be coherent at this moment.
Please go ahead. You have two minutes.
Well, I'm kind of, I'm kind of befuddled about this short-term rental dilemma that we find ourselves in. But what I can be clear about in listening to these speakers this evening is that it's a problem that's caused by some really bad actors that probably need some type of consequences that is really in the nature of something immediate. I wish everyone good luck in the resolution of this problem that seems like it's becoming more complicated each day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next raised hand is for Erin Maceus.
Please go ahead.
Good evening, City Council and staff. My name is Erin Maceus of Lindemar. I heard something tonight. Two of the STR owners who commented, "Live in a rent-controlled city that limits the rental income of property owners and also bans all unhosted short-term rentals." These Pacifica short-term rental owners are arguing against a regulated rental environment that impacts their income, yet enjoy that regulation by living outside of Pacifica. Let that sink in. We attract investors because we do not have a robust ordinance, and we lack enforcement. It is my understanding earlier that a point of order was called about the ability of Mayor Protem Vatalas to participate by Zoom. Council voted to allow it. It has an official ruling been made on whether or not a vote of the council tonight can be appealed based on that parliamentary issue, since generally speaking, there must be an adopted language that permits for hybrid meetings of a governing body. Last time I spoke on the short-term rental issue, I let you know that you missed a great party on my street. Well, you missed another one last night. The listing on my street violates the California Coastal Commission's environmental justice policy. Thoughtful regulation has been analyzed by other municipalities and the Coastal Commission to restore peace and quiet in residential neighborhoods and its impact on the coastal zone. We also have put staff to the task that evaluated in the same recommendations. There is a reasonable expectation to have a sense of community here and maintain the safe place to live rating we just received. There are serious flaws and lobbyist bias in our staff report. With ongoing nuisance issues, nuisance issues associated with short-term rentals, and the financial drain of accountability system, preserving the sense of community is accomplished by aligning our code with others. A ban on full-time, no-host rentals, plus a strong enforcement arm with fines and revocation of permit when nuisance conditions exist.
Thank you.
We need action. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next raised hand is for Tom Dennison. There's actually two, so I'll just do the first one.
Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, councilmembers. The reason why I initially participated in this meeting was because I received a text from Good Neighbors of L.A., and they brought up two points. One is short-term rentals are on safety issues in communities, and at this place is local residents. I would disagree with the safety issue because Pacifica is just recently ranked number 15 of the safest suburbs in the country in impacting housing for residents. It's not short-term rentals. It's the draconian rules we have for building houses. They buy, like, to live next to Sun Valley Market, and that lot has been vacant for over 30 years. Nothing but weeds. There was a great effort to develop it, but the rules made it so cumbersome that no developer would be able to make a profit there. And the quarry also had wonderful plans for adding housing. Same with the bowling alley. Now that that is vacant, that could be developed. And school property's been inherent for years. How they're going to be developed for housing, but nothing has been broken ground yet. On the call, there's quite a few great suggestions on how unhosed short-term rentals can be accommodated. And I would fully support that. Although I don't host one myself, I've used short-term rentals throughout the world and found them to be very convenient, much better than a hotel. And the individual said, "Well, if we don't have the unhosed SDRs, they'll just go to hotels." Well, hotels are already at 90% occupancy. So, they're not, we'll just lose out on that business. And we won't get any additional revenue. So, if we're going to stop having unhosed SDRs, then what is the plan to make up for that revenue loss? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next raise hand is for Sam Casillas.
Please go ahead.
I couldn't believe that I just heard staff state that the revenue numbers being used for the report are from Airbnb, and that Airbnb didn't provide any way to verify those numbers, and then that staff also couldn't verify these numbers either. It is beyond unprofessional to even consider those revenue numbers, let alone use them for a staff report. The city manager should be embarrassed to use these revenue numbers. If I ever use unsubstantiated numbers in an analysis at work, I would expect to be fired. It's amazing how many of these Airbnb owners meant to live here but just couldn't, and out of sheer kindness are doing SDRs versus long-term rentals for profit? If these people want to own a hotel, then go buy a hotel. I also want somebody to please explain how a commercial hotel is allowed in an area zone for residential. We even have had these Airbnb owners send threatening letters from their attorneys to neighbors who are reporting illegal activity to police, saying they will sue them for calling the police and causing them economic hardship. Poor people. These out-of-town corporations are stealing our culture and our neighborhoods. Our homes are not hotels. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next raise hand is for Shree Chan.
Please go ahead.
Hi there. Hi there, council members. Wanted to express my appreciation for what you're doing to serve our community. As you heard tonight, the vast majority of us do support somehow sharing to build community and improve people's access to our awesome beaches and businesses. But the numbers just don't make it sense. And as Sam said before, same thing in my job as a regulator. I mean, you can't just take the numbers of the corporation you regulate and take that as fact. That's pretty unbelievable. So, especially council members, thank you for all the work you did back in June. You specifically had directed staff to run an analysis of what we can do to crack down on large corporate-owned properties, because you have heard all of these complaints from us over and over again about how much our lives are being disrupted by unscrupulous, you know, short-term rental owners. It is heartbreaking. And, you know, for staff to say that they cannot and it's too difficult to copy and paste regulations from other communities like Half Moon Bay, 20 minutes down the road, or San Francisco, is despicable. So, thank you again for just speaking for all of us as community members and as residents here who are all working to make a better Pacifica for all of us. Have a great night.
Thank you.
The next raise hand is for Nicole Larson.
Please go ahead.
Hey there, guys. My name's Nicole Larson, and I've been a Pacifica resident since 2004. We were so fortunate to find our beautiful home. It's always been a blessing on our lives. When we're at our house gazing out at the Pacific Ocean, it fills us with a sense of joy and peace. We've been so grateful to be able to share this special feeling with several people over the past two years when we've had to turn our house into a short-term vacation rental. We did this because of a couple different reasons. No, I don't live there full-time anymore, but I do come home every few months. Most of you know me and know that I'm still a very active member in Pacifica. You can ask any of our neighbors. I would implore you to go up to my neighborhood in Lindemar and speak to any single one of my neighbors. Short-term vacation rentals are not always a bad thing. Please stop making these blanket statements. Yes, people take advantage of this loophole, like the big corporations that you are all complaining about. They purchase these houses just to turn into STVRs. They don't register with the city. They do need to be regulated. We are familiar with the Pacifica ordinance for the short-term residences. And if that was actually enforced, a lot of these issues would not happen. Our short-term vacation rental may be an exception to the rule, but I've heard lots of other very responsible people talking about the benefits to the city. And I can tell you with certainty that we have all five-star reviews because not only do we treat our guests like visitors to our home, but they love Pacifica as a result of having this wonderful place to call home when they're visiting our coast. We provide them with an opportunity to stay. Families that would have to spend over $1,000 to get enough rooms to stay in all of the rooms they would need at a hotel. Not to mention, hotels don't give you an opportunity to cook your own food. By providing our home, we're giving a place for so many people from around the world to come and truly enjoy a Pacifica beach town, where they can go to the grocery store, make their own food, go out to eat if they want to, but not be dependent upon it. We are good business for Pacifica. There will always be bad apples.
Thank you very much.
Rather than cutting
Thank you.
Shall I return to Samantha Redding?
Yes, let's try Samantha Redding, please. If she's still on the line. Samantha, you can press star nine to unmute if you're on the phone, or see if you can unmute. Press your microphone icon on your computer.
She is still muted.
Okay, then I'm going to ask Samantha Redding to please send comments to the council through our publiccomment@pacifica.gov.
There are no other raised hands.
Thank you. I am going to close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Can I just say one thing to the public? Thank you so much for using your hands. Not only did it make it pleasant, but it also let me see you. And so, I think that's, there's a lot, it's a big difference than clapping. So, I appreciate it.
I do, too. Although I will admit to liking the gavel. I never got to have a gavel when I was the mayor before. I'm making up for last time. No, just kidding. Little levity at this hour.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
If I might just, I wanted to address a public comment regarding Mayor Vaterlaus and whether someone was in her location. Under AB 2449, the member must publicly disclose before any action is taken whether any individual 18 years of age or older is present in the room at the remote location with the member and the general nature of the member's relationship with any such individuals. Mayor Vaterlaus did at the top of the meeting indicate that her husband was at the house and not in the room at that particular moment in time, but presumably is still in the house. So, you might want to check in with Mayor Vaterlaus just to determine whether her husband is still in the house and with her. But ultimately, the council is not taking any action during this study session, so that provision would not apply for the study session portion. And Mayor Vaterlaus can participate in the study session discussion.
Thank you. Mayor Vaterlaus, did you have anything you wanted to let us know?
My husband is still in the building in a different room than I'm located in.
Thank you. I have two lights, and I feel like one of them is from a really long time ago, Councilmember Beer.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
And I have my own light, which I guess means Councilmember, um, what's your name again? Big Stick. Is that correct?
That is truly my name.
No, that is your light.
Um, yes.
Please, go ahead.
Sitting in your seat that you normally would occupy, and therefore, that's the light that seems most readily available. It's not easy for me to sit up here tonight for a specific reason, and that specific reason is that I don't like when I walk into one of these discussions feeling less than as neutral as a human being could. I don't like walking into a decision and feeling like I have a certain leaning. I do not think that good policy is born of passion. I think it's born of good analysis and good paying attention to what the apparent community needs are. So, I'm going to, um, I'm sure displease one of the groups more than the others, but I tend to like to be equal opportunity in how I displease people. And so, I'm going to start with the group I'm less likely to displease by the end of my comments. I have a girlfriend who has spent substantial time living in San Francisco, and she would be happy to inform anyone who has interest that it is her impression as somebody who's spent years living in San Francisco that your average San Francisco resident does not leave their neighborhood, let alone the city, which might account for some of their economic study. Unlike San Francisco and Pacifica, if we want services, oftentimes, we must leave the city in order to accomplish that. What I will concede is that what we do not have in front of us is an economic study to verify one way or the other, but I did want to observe that out the gate. As to one of the gentlemen who spoke, can't speak for my fellow councilpeople. I have talked to people on both sides of this question and have tried to do my due diligence. I've certainly answered the call as yes whenever somebody wanted to speak to me, as is my nature and my practice. And I agree with one, if not many, of the speakers who are in favor of hosted SDR units. I like the hosted ones. As to the rest of where my considerations keep nagging me, I emphasize with those whom absolutely have provided a service through hosting their SDRs in unhosed fashion. I don't think that, from the standpoint of the laws we have on the books or the nature of, you know, kind of the capitalist system that is running the way it is, they've particularly done anything wrong. To one of the speakers, my family, too, has a house that is currently unoccupied, not being run as an STR. And we are figuring out whether or not any family member wishes to occupy that house, and if so, what that would entail for said family member to make sure that the entire family is okay with it. And if not, we'll probably be selling the house. If we weren't doing that, we'd probably be renting it out as a long-term rental. We are not renting it out as a short-term rental. So, in interest of full disclosure, that's my basis for comparison. After that, I had intended on asking a series of questions at the front of the meeting, but I don't think I need to. I think what I need to do is instead state what my perception is as somebody who has actually actively spent upwards of six years, five and a half-ish, working on some of these planning documents that come before us, almost four years on council and almost two years as a planning commissioner. And as a city person working on planning documents, what occurs to me as somebody who has been earnestly working on things like the general plan, the Sharp Park specific plan, the local coastal land use plan, any document in which we seem to be trying to orchestrate how we would like our city to happen, what I keep coming back to over and over again as a place that might be regarded as objective, that might be regarded as neutral, or as close to it as I can come in my mind, is that the reason I've been engaged in upwards of six years in planning and contributing to that process, and certainly trying to lend my voice before I was up here on the dais, is because, as a community and as decision-makers, we get to try and figure out the best way for our town to develop. And so, when we enter into a general plan, and by the way, there's that housing element part of the general plan. There's the state-required regional housing need allocation numbers, of which were upwards of 1,900 units that we're supposed to be planning for over the course of the next six years. You know, it was eight years, two years ago. And so, when you're looking at 1,900 units that you can't seem to find a place for in your community, although through our amazing planning staff, and they're collaborating with various consultants, we've, you know, we're finding a way. We're working in good faith with the state. But 150 units, taken out of that equation, seems at least counterintuitive to what the state would have us plan for as our city. And that's before asking the residents how they want our city to develop. And then we get to the point of these actual documents. We say, "Yeah, some residences would be good over there. Let's zone for there to be houses for people to live." Up to the point where a house, where a person or family could live, or a unit, apartment building, is specifically zoned for use as residence. And I hear what the SDRs operators are saying, and I can, you know, believe in good faith that some of them really are that good at what they do and really are providing that good an experience for the people who are, you know, utilizing their services. But where I keep coming back to is the reason why I've engaged in all that planning, we've been engaged in all that planning, we've been engaged in all that planning, we've all been engaged in all that planning, is to come to the determination that in that place where a house has been built, it's because we want it to be used as a residence. And that's where I keep coming back to. And when I hear comments to that effect, they ring true to me. We engaged in a planning process, not that a hotel unit could be embedded in a residential neighborhood. And after that, I actually don't know if, you know, at the end of the night, I can vote with consensus because right now that's kind of my guide, my touchstone. But I'll, you know, I look forward to probably doing in this instance more listening than talking as I did on the other side of public comment. I'm always open to further consideration, but that's where I am and where I'm stewing. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't remember which one members. Councilmember Beer?
Those are a couple of things that I think I would like to have responses to that came from public comment. One of them was about ADUs. And so we have an ADU ordinance, correct? And maybe can we give some explanation of why ADUs cannot be used as short-term rentals? From anyone, I don't know, planning, who would?
Thank you, Councilmember Beer, Gran Harucia Senior Planner. I wasn't here when we prepared that specific provision, but from my understanding, the reason we prohibited STRs and ADUs is because ADUs are used towards our total unit count for residential units in the housing element, and they are also, we would like to reserve them or preserve them for residential use only.
Naturally affordable.
Exactly.
Okay. And then there was another comment about the Coastal Commission meeting and a moratorium request, and I know Assistant City Manager Carter was at that meeting, and so I wasn't at that meeting. I'm sorry?
And Stephanie was there too.
Stephanie was there too. So can you let us know what happened at that meeting? And that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions, Stephanie Sartaventis, Acting Community Development Deputy Director. I was at the meeting on June 13th where the Coastal Commission certified the city's cap. During the discussion on the city's cap, there was some questions regarding limiting the, the application of STR permits. There was never any direction from the commission itself. There was a few questions and comments from individual commissioners. The entire commission never gave the city any direction to continue with that path.
In fact, I want to add that during the discussion, they actually confirmed that any specific direction would have to be brought back to you, and we, our staff, could not agree to any additional directions like moratorium or any additional policy directions. So that was also mentioned during the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowles?
I have a lot to say and I have a lot of questions, but my main question is, how late are we going and how much can we realistically accomplish tonight and what's the best use of our time?
As somebody who has work at 5:00 AM tomorrow morning, I can be here till about 4:45 or so AM. And you know me, so you know I mean that sincerely.
I know you mean that sincerely, but I know other people on the council do not have your stamina.
I appreciate that it'll be an amalgamation of our sensibilities to determine how long we're here.
So, I mean, I ask that because maybe what we want to do is, I mean, we're going to need some time, right, to go through this whole, I don't think we're going to finish it tonight and give staff all the direction tonight. Maybe we can give a little bit of direction on a few things that are the key topics. What I'm interested in because we're coming up on the renewal period is what the heck we can do right now to, one, increase enforcement and, two, if there are things that we can do in the application to control some of these bad actors and, and, you know, some things like parking requirements. I mean, I heard so much of the complaints about that and we're, staff is talking about doing a site plan and, you know, limiting parking to what is allowed by the municipal code and how the house was built, you know, I mean, so I'd like to know, like, what kinds of things can we do right now that would make a difference to the community immediately?
I think that's a fair question, and I'm sure there's something, but I'd like to hear what staff has to say.
I'll start. Councilmember Kevin Wood, House City Manager. So a lot of the requirements about the program will need to be ordinance revisions. So those aren't going to happen
Right.
right now. The permit application and, and that we're working on with HDL is more of a mechanism to request information from the applicant. So I think, you know, if there's input about the information that you want us to request on the permit application, then we could build that into the application. So I'll start there and turn to staff about any other ideas about what could start now.
Well, the other input we requested today was just provide your initial take on the administrative policies that we also can develop and include without making official revisions to the STR ordinance. So that could be in effect as well. So when we talked about reducing the timeframe to bring unresponsive properties to compliance and defining revocation procedures, like three strikes close and issuing NOVs after each found violation, so things like that could be included in administrative policies.
So perhaps we could start with those and we can talk about them. And, I mean, I have some other questions of things that we might be able to add to the application. I mean, if, if other council is willing.
I also think it might not be just the application that we need to collect, like, we need to be able to collect data from the platforms that are telling us, like, how many people are actually in the unit, how, you know, like?
Yeah, and no, I want a clarification on that too, what actually HDL can give us, right, that will help us with some of these enforcement issues so we know how long a place is rented if we're putting a cap of 60 days or whatever the cap is.
So I would imagine that would come from the platforms too. Right?
Right.
I think that's really important for us because a lot of what was said in the staff report was, we're not going to be able to enforce it because we're not going to have the data because it's going to be self-reporting.
Right.
And so that I'm feeling really passionate about, that they, we need to, like, create a data system so that we can collect all the data so that there can be enforcement.
And the other thing I want to say, I, so when I read the staff report and, and then a lot of people have been suggesting we look at Half Moon Bay's ordinance, and I read that very carefully, and I ended up emailing their council members to see if I could talk to them, just to see, I mean, it's been a year. So how's your ordinance going, you know, people, people are saying, oh, they've lost all this money, they have this big deficit, you know? So anyway, I had a lot of questions and, and they ended up putting me in touch with their Assistant City Manager, John Doherty, who I spoke with at length this morning. And there's some really interesting information there. So if you want to just give me a little bit of time, but, um, one, they now, they, they had less STRs before the ordinance went into effect. They had 48, that was their pre-COVID high, now they're up to 70. Their TOT before the ordinance was 218, it's now 505. And they increased their TOT percentage as we were proposing to do, you know, as a ballot measure this year, and, and they've said, you know, that's helped a little bit too, but more than double is not going to make the difference of that 3% increase. Yes, they have more hotels, so their total TOT is 8.2 million. Their TOT from short-term rentals is only 505. And people say that's not comparison to Pacifica, but that's, you know, if you look, they're, they're also, I think about a third of our population, I don't know their housing stock, but, you know, proportionally, it's actually not that different when you look at the number of houses versus the number of TOT. They do have a primary residency requirement. They, their laws are really strict and really well-written, and even if you don't necessarily know that someone's following them completely, the law is there. And one of, one of their, they, they have a two-strike policy, and one of the strikes is if you have lied on your application or misrepresented something, that's an immediate strike and a pull. And so just having those laws where people know that they can be called out and lose it brings them better into compliance. The other thing they do is they notice the public, the, a certain number, radius or number of houses around, and I think that's really important too because that also helps with enforcement, right? So you have the people around, you know that place is licensed for eight people or three cars, and the neighbors can complain. I mean, that's something I would really like to add to the application along with, you know, a diagram of parking to show where the parking is, a diagram of the rooms, doesn't have to be a fancy architectural plan, but how are your bedrooms laid out? Is that, is that really a bedroom next to a garage? Because that's not a legal bedroom, right? So, so we're educating, because sometimes, I mean, the operators don't know the building code either, right? But by having them go through this process, draw the plans, have an inspection, make sure the rooms are legal, make sure we're not putting them, people in a garage with no bedrooms, why, why are we still allowing that? I don't understand, right? So something should be immediate revocation if, if it's a life safety hazard. Anyway, they, they have only, and so it's been in operation for a year, and they have, they have not yet had to revoke any permits, they're now looking at enforcement of two, but in reality, their ordinance is working.
And I recall, because we were at the Coastal Commission meeting when that got approved, but now I don't remember the specifics about hosted versus unhosted. And my original recollection was there were, and there was an unlimited number of nights for a hosted STR. There was no limitation on the number of nights one could, could have rent, you could rent out. Whereas unhosted, the, the maximum number of nights was 60. And I believe that came from a negotiation and then a presentation to the commissioners themselves. And minding, you know, pointing out the fact that Half Moon Bay's entire city is in the coastal zone, unlike Pacifica's, so whatever the Coastal Commission decides affects the entire city, we have a little bit of a different situation here. But I do recall that there was a series of negotiations and discussions between coastal staff and city staff, and they could not come to terms on that point, on the number of nights. And the commission was asking for 180 nights, if I recall.
Commission staff?
Commission staff. And the city did not want that many nights. And they had come to term and suggested 120. And the commission staff did not believe the commission wanted 120. They thought they wanted more, and so they couldn't come to terms and brought the item forward to the commissioners themselves with that one decision unmade. And upon robust discussion, the commissioners voted to have it be 60 nights. So they took neither the 180 recommendation nor the 120-night recommendation that the city itself was ready to accept. So I just offer that as, because Half Moon Bay has come up so many times in reference in our community and because they're so close to us, I think it's important to have, you know, that background. So you mentioned a few things that I have questions about, like inspections, for one. My understanding is presently the way our ordinance operates, it is a self-inspection, that when you want to have an STR and you fill out your application, there's certain requirements and you attest to them. You also, correct me, please, do you need to submit a drawing with your application to show the layout of the property? And do you need to submit anything, any information about square footage, number of bedrooms, et cetera?
Do you want me to? I can answer this since I
Thank you.
have it up on my screen.
Thank you.
So the requirements are that the applicant submit an application, and the applicant must complete an application on a form provided by the city, accompanied by a fee established by resolution of the council. So the form itself is sort of left, it's not described in the, in the code, the application would be sort of up to the city to prepare. The property owner must consent. If the applicant is a tenant, he or she must demonstrate written consent to the property owner. And then there must be some contact information. The applicant must provide current contact information to the city and information regarding advertising platforms to be used. Then there is guest safety. The short-term rental must have a smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector, and fire extinguisher, and the applicant must submit a signed safety declaration in a form prepared by the administrator to be kept on the prop, in the property file at the city. So those are the requirements.
And I'm looking at the application form. I don't want you to think I've never seen it before, but I literally got a copy of it this afternoon, so bear with me on that because I had work today before I came here. So it also says that you need to have a diagram of exits, fire extinguisher locations, yes, posted on-site, but you don't have to submit that as part of the package. Am I correct in that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
A diagram under item eight where it says that the applicant will provide information to guests, a diagram of exits, fire extinguisher locations, police and fire contact numbers, et cetera.
Correct.
But that drawing that they need to submit, they stipulate that, yes, I understand and I'll do that, they don't submit that to the city as part of this application package.
Right. Not that I'm aware of. I mean, staff may, no, doesn't look like it.
No?
It just says that the short-term rental permit, permittee must provide the following materials electronically to any guests before arrival and make available printed materials on-site for the guest with the following information and identifies the various requirements for the package. A diagram of exits, fire extinguisher locations, fire and police contact numbers, the permittee's contact information, the city's noise regulation, and the city's social host liability ordinance.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you for that. And we have heard from staff that there were some suggestions about ways they wanted to update this application form. I don't know if I really have the energy to go into that side-by-side comparison at this point, but I would ask staff if you could point out where you feel it's being improved to address the kinds of issues that we have been hearing about throughout the course of this evening.
So I believe we attached the applica, the old application that had only eight questions. So the new draft has 13 different questions, so we are asking for additional information from property owners and, but I want to highlight that you are correct, so all these requirements are self-attested right now. So we do not have the required inspection of each unit, and we only go and inspect when we receive complaint and code enforcement needs to investigate for it.
So we've heard many, and I know the mayor's waiting with her hand patiently raised, and I'll get to you in one minute, Mayor, and then I'm going to, I'm finished this thought, and then I'll get with you. When we, we've heard many times through the course of this evening and through the last several weeks and months that there are suggestions that there are a number of homes being operated as short-term rentals, unhosted short-term rentals, that have bedrooms listed on their listings that did not formerly exist when the home was a home where someone lived in the neighborhood before it was sold. And so I, it seems like it would be pretty straightforward to check per, building permits to determine if a four-bedroom house that was formerly a two-bedroom house has had work done to it. I'm, I'm not understanding if that is part of our process or not. Can you comment, please?
So I think, sorry, didn't mean to startle you there.
It's okay if you didn't.
So Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, if I can just jump in, so it sounds like you're asking, could the city initiate a code enforcement investigation based on an application? If, you know, if we've got an application for an STR that has, then the location lists five bedrooms, but the city has records indicating the house used to be two bedrooms, could the city initiate a code enforcement investigation to determine if those rooms are, were appropriately, if, if those improvements were appropriately made with the proper building inspections and permits, et cetera? And I think the answer is yes, the city could initiate a code enforcement investigation. The difference is that, that, you know, a, an inspection of the home is not currently required in the code for STR permits, so we couldn't require it as a part of the STR permit process now, at this moment in time. There could, it could be that the city inspects the property as a part of the code enforcement process, but not as a part of the STR permit. Does that make sense?
I understood what you said.
Yeah.
And with regard to code enforcement questions and complaints, they can, they can conduct an inspection on the basis of a complaint. You, you're, the information you just said had to do with an application, but I'm also wondering about complaints.
Correct. The city can investigate and respond to complaints.
The city can investigate and respond to complaints of, you know, building violations, certainly. The city can't just unilaterally walk onto somebody's property. Obviously, property owners have property rights. And so the city usually would request that the property owner voluntarily grant the city authority to inspect. But on those occasions where the property owner doesn't voluntarily grant the city the authority to inspect, we could take other measures to, you know, get approval from the court, either through an inspection warrant or through some other legal process to inspect the property if necessary, if warranted.
Okay, I need to let the mayor speak. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I think that a lot of the regulations we have here, like two people per bedroom and cars, I would actually make it less cars, like two cars per house. But I think that the majority of people who are renting short-term rentals would abide by those rules that we are going to add. I think that even though we may not be able to enforce them all, the fact that we have the rules, I think people will abide by them. The three-strikes provision, I totally agree with, that they should be out unless, like for example, the property that was mentioned many times on Belfast that has an illegal unit that they rent out. Those people probably could have one strike and be out because they're not abiding by the regular rules of buildings. And they, they shouldn't be allowed to rent or continue to use that property there. I do think that, that people in general follow the rules. I know that we have some that don't, and that was one of my things about the three strikes because we obviously have many, many short-term rentals that are following the rules and abiding by everything. Maybe we do put a limit on unhoseded and maybe it's a hundred and twenty days. We also, I mean, as a Realtor, we're not allowed to determine who we sell a property to. The last property I sold, they said they were going to live there, and then I look and they have a short-term rental permit. I can't discriminate and say I can't sell to someone who's going to be a short-term rental or even to say that I sell it to a person who is not going to occupy. That's not allowed. But I'm wondering on the numbers, like when we have one corporation that owns fifteen different properties here. I think that's an issue because they appear to be one of the major bad actors here. Another item is that we allow for notice with 24/7 that someone respond within thirty minutes of phone calls and/or an hour per period. Well, what if you're a neighbor and the garbage got left out on a Monday when garbage isn't picked up till Friday? Who do I call? I don't want to call the police. I want to have access to the person who's either managing or owning that property so that I can call them directly myself and say, hey, you need to come pick up this garbage before the police are called because I don't think it's police business to clean up people's garbage. There are so many items involved in all of this that I, I think, you know, I know it's taken us a lot of time already and it's interesting to listen to all the people on both sides because there are good players and there are bad players. And now I'm repeating myself, so I'm going to let someone else talk.
Thank you. Who wants to speak?
I had my lead on first.
Oh, sorry. And then Mary. Look, oh, no, wait. Yeah, beer. Yes. Go ahead, Tiger.
I agree substantially with what the mayor just said. And she used the term deterrence. I think that if we have regulations on the books at any given point in time, there may be, we may have more staff capacity to more robustly regulate or, or not. But if we have that regulation on the books, then we can enforce. And the knowledge of somebody looking to create their business in town vis-à-vis our regulation will look at what those regulations are. And there is a deterrence effect vis-à-vis what we have as what our ordinance is. Deterrence is a part of it. Getting back to what you were saying earlier. Yeah, on page, bottom of packet page 110, therefore, staff would recommend a provision to require an onsite inspection prior to issuing an STR permit to investigate any life, health, or safety issues and other items necessary to operate an STR. And I believe that it's a part of Half Moon Bay's ordinance that they have a consent to inspection. So again, it's not like we're rewriting the manual here.
Right.
I agree with that too, and I think that the STR owner should definitely pay for that inspection.
That was going to be my next question, how that happens, for example, when you're opening a business, which this is. How do inspections work on those kinds of permits in the city? Who pays for that inspection?
Can we differentiate between the fees for hosted STRs and the fees for unhoseded STRs?
Good question. Well put.
Well, yeah, I think that was one of the deliberations.
Thank you. I can respond to the question. It is typically not the practice of the city to inspect for business licenses, at least that I'm aware of. We don't inspect for business licenses. We do inspect for home occupation permits and that is included in the fee for that permit.
And if I'm not mistaken, because, you know, there were some public comment about these are, this is zoned for homes. Why are there businesses in these areas at all? And I know about that home occupation permit because I thought, what does this? When I first learned of it, because I'm like, of course it's occupied, it's a home. And I didn't understand that it was occupying part of a home to run a business. And that, so you're saying when one is applying for that, there is an inspection required?
Yes, for home occupation permits, planning staff does inspect. Our home occupation ordinance requires that very limited space in the single-family home or the residential unit is used for the business. And so in order to ensure that, prior to issuance of the home occupation permit, planning staff does conduct an inspection.
Thank you. Mary?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I agree with a lot of what's been said. So I agree with the two people per room, the three strikes. I think it should be sixty days. What I'm concerned about is differentiating the corporate buyouts to our local property owners because I think there's a big difference there. And then we heard that in our public comment, right? So if we have someone who has, is, they have one home and they're using it as a short-term rental and they live in San Bruno and they can come over in fifteen minutes if something goes wrong. I think that's a lot different than when we have corporations buying up a bunch of homes and having big parties. And so how can we put something in place that differentiates the two and doesn't allow for people to be able to come in, or corporations to come in and buy a bunch of property and do that? So I want to talk about that. I don't think we've talked about that yet. Like the one, the one permit per natural person or, I don't know how we need to say it, but I do think that there's a difference. And I want to honor the folks that were here tonight that are doing the right thing and being good neighbors. And I love it that you're having conversations with each other because that's what we're supposed to be doing in our communities. And I love this. Thank you so much. So there's that point that I really want to talk about. And then the other point that I really want to talk about too is the multi-unit housing that are naturally affordable apartments for people like me when I was raising my daughter. Like the whole apartment building that I lived in at 200 Lakeview, all five units are STRs. I don't think we should allow that. I, I don't think that's fair. And I, and in the staff report, it talks about there's a grand total of forty-four units that are multi, within multi-unit properties. That's forty-four families that could have at least kind of an affordable place to live. And so I think we need to talk about that too. And I know in the staff report, it says you can limit it to one STR per multifamily residential building with five or more units.
I think to that point, we can, we can make that a thing in whatever number of units in a multifamily that we'd like. So if it's two multifamily units, we can limit it.
Right. In other words, not five, it must be five. I don't, I don't understand what you mean. Say that again.
So I wish I had the nomenclature in front of me. I think the idea is if it's five units, only one of them can be an STR, right?
Correct.
Well, instead of it being a building with five units, you could do that with a building of four units, three units, two units. If you have two units, you can limit it to one of them being an STR.
I mean, I can see that too, if it's a duplex and you have the property owner that lives on one side and then they're renting the other side out. But again, it's that local property owner piece that has to match up. As, as City Manager Woodhouse likes to say, it's complex.
It is.
So Sid, I mean, back to Mary's question. I mean, how, yeah, how do we limit corporations owning multiple units? Can we somehow limit to one permit per person? I mean, I see that the application has changed and I appreciate that. Where it used to say applicant's name, so it could be an operator and not necessarily an owner, and now it's an owner. I think, I think that's a good first start.
So I'll, I'll address this question unless staff wants to. So I think that the concern we have is that, you know, there are, corporations are identified as persons as well. And I did notice that Half Moon Bay's ordinance didn't seem to define person. I didn't see a definition of person. So that's a problem, right? What is a person? And so we don't want to adopt ordinances where there's ambiguity or an inability to enforce. What, what, and I do, the staff report also points out that many individuals hold property now, these days, as corporations or as LLCs. It's not uncommon for families to own a property as an LLC because members collectively come together to own a piece of property. So, so that's an issue as well. But I think if we're trying to avoid permittees holding multiple properties, which I think is what the concern is with a corporate entity holding multiple properties in Pacifica, then you could limit how many short-term rental permits a permittee can hold.
But if a permittee is a corporation, I mean, I
You would include in the definition of person, a corporation, so person can be anybody.
No, I know, but corporation, I mean, like when you're selling a house or whatever, I mean, they, or when developers are building something, they'll make an LLC to build that one building and then it's a different LLC for the next building. So, I mean, it could still be one corporation but with different LLCs, right?
Right, yes, that's true. And, and we had the similar problem with the cannabis regulations. I don't know if council members will recall. There was concern about how the ownership would be held and whether there would be, you know, players coming in through an LLC and sort of shifting ownership without the city realizing that the ownership had been shifted. So the city council adopted regulations addressing those specific concerns.
Meanwhile, if that single entity has a cap of sixty nights that they can rent it unhoseded, that might be the combination that dissuades them from wanting to create multiple LLCs to buy the various properties. And then on page 110, it says the city could condition a short-term rental permit on occupancy of the unit by at least one of the unit's primary residents for a certain time period. So that's another element that would play into this, right? Number that a single entity could hold, single entity needs to be an occupant, sixty-day cap. And in the case of a multifamily dwelling, only one of those units is allowed to be STR. I would think that would dissuade, you know, whoever's holding the fifteen houses or whatever from hopefully buying it up. Or at least it might be as close as we can get vis-à-vis what I'm seeing here. Am I reading that right, Assistant City Attorney?
You're talking about what's in the primary residence recommendations?
Restrictions on the number of short-term rental permits held by a single entity could accomplish the same purpose. Like San Francisco and Half Moon Bay, the city could condition a short-term rental permit on occupancy of the unit by at least one of the unit's primary residents for a certain time period. Packet page 110, second paragraph.
Yes, that's what I read too.
Okay, cool.
So what, what about the primary residence requirement? I mean, that's going to limit corporations?
That would limit, it, it could limit corporations, but it's not distinguishing between a natural person and a corporation.
But does, does an entity have a primary residence? I mean, like you're filing your tax return, you have to give your address. That's your primary residence. You can't have two primary residences, right?
Right. So we'd have to find some way to address it for corporations. And I'm not, as I sit here right now, I can't think of anything. Like maybe an individual from the corporation can be the primary residence. So we'd have to think about that.
Yeah, thank you.
I understand what you're saying. There's not a direct correlation, so how do we address that? We'd have to think about that.
I would like to address the issue of natural person because this isn't the first time I've heard resistance from our legal team about avoiding that term. I believe Assistant City Manager Cohen had some concerns about that. But I'm also hearing that other communities have done it. I heard, now, I mean, you know, maybe a statement was made at the Coastal Commission meeting about that and that they haven't conditioned approvals or something with that term being used. So I don't understand why we're hesitant or think we can't do that.
Well, as explained in the staff report, corporations can be persons too. And there is various case law that discusses discrimination against corporations. So we want to be cognizant of the fact that regulations can have, can sometimes be characterized in a way that discriminates against corporations and that could open up the city to a potential lawsuit.
Okay, can we just agree that we just want one permit per person or entity, whatever it is? Do we have council direction and one owner?
One permit per entity.
Yeah. And have the city attorney come back to us about what the best policy is for that.
Do we agree on that, Mayor?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I mean, I think people can get around that, you know, because someone might say, okay, we'll put this one in my name. We'll put this one in your name. We'll put this one in my brother's name and my sister's name. I think people can get around that, but I, I think it's worth a try.
It feels like the more we have to twist people into pretzels, maybe the least, less likely they'll be willing to become pretzels. And in the meantime, what I'm reading in this paragraph is held by a single entity coupled with short-term rental permit, condition a short-term rental permit on occupancy of the of the unit by at least one of the unit's primary residents. So I, I feel like it's a cocktail. It's not just a, a one-off. It's, these things work together in such a fashion that combined, they act as the deterrent that I think we would hope they would, or, you know, in theory.
All right, what else? Um, I'd still like to go back to the application, if we can just kind of go through that. Um, like, can we, can we require the contact information 20 minutes, you know, by phone, 60 minutes, or whatever the numbers are on the application?
I think we need to. I think those are really important facts.
Yep. I mean, I, you know, there are times people are on a plane or unreachable, but I think just like, I'm, you know, where I work in my day job, if you have, you have emergency contact, if one person isn't available, there's the next person that you go to.
Right.
So it seems to me for maintaining their license or their permit to operate in good standing, the operator, if they know they're going to be on a plane, would have someone else that could be the designated person they respond to. I don't know if we put that on the application or we just, it's part of the deal.
Right.
And if you don't respond in 20 minutes, one strike, you know, I don't know. This is what I'm imagining.
Yeah, the strikes probably have to be defined as part of the greater ordinance, but what can we get on here that they, you know, at least be-
Yeah.
Like the one about lying on the application too.
Love that.
Yeah. So can we ask for that on the application?
I think that you could ask that in, in, on the application, but the, the requirement about being available within 30 minutes, that's not specified in the ordinance. So you can certainly ask for current contact information and somebody who would be available locally, but that's not a requirement in the code, that somebody be available within 30 minutes, say, or 60 minutes.
Can we put it in the code? Can we add that to the code?
Yes, the council could decide that that's something they want to include in the revisions. Yes.
I, I think it's really important.
Me too, and onsite within 60 minutes. Isn't that what it said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the staff recommendations for this.
Yes.
And, and then Mayor Vatalas asked if that number can be public, so someone in the community can complain? Or is that private information that wouldn't be allowed to be shared?
I mean, if we advise short-term rental applicants that that information is going to be made available to the public, I wouldn't have a problem with making it available to the public.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, the time being 12:21, I move to extend to 1 o'clock.
We're on a roll. I, I second.
Well, if Mary's second, I second.
Yeah, I, I feel like we need to get some-
Run a roll, run a roll. Okay.
A roll call vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Yeah, I heard the motion to extend to 1 a.m. by Councilmember Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember Beer. Starting the roll call vote with Councilmember Bowles.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Vatalas.
Yes, but please don't go past 1:00. This is way past the time I am able to do this. Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Um, so can we ask for a diagram of the plan and the parking as part of this application? We're not telling them what the rules are, we're just asking for the diagram.
So I, I'm, um, I'm not sure what you're asking. Are you asking if, if that can be in the application now or in the future?
Now, I'm asking.
Yeah. And, and you would want to add something about a diagram of the house or?
Yeah, a diagram of the rooms showing the layout, the basic layout, um, and then also a diagram of the site showing the parking and with a notice that, you know, Pacifica Municipal Code requires parking spaces to be 9 feet by 20 feet, I think it is. So that we know, I mean, we're still working on, but at least we know what we have that we're working with and what, what STRs are going to be problematic to meet our regulations as we define the regulations. But it'll also help us know if we're looking at permit records, for example, if we see that someone provides a diagram of four bedrooms and the house is only permitted for two, oops, we might want to do a code inspection.
Christine, there, there's a couple issues with that. Um, the, a lot of the Park Pacifica homes, when they were built, or, or would be considered non-conforming bedrooms at this time because of the height of ingress and egress windows, but they were considered bedrooms at the time they were built.
Yeah, I, I know there's a lot of that. I'm not, not asking about windows, just-
I know, but that has to do with whether there's a legal bedroom or not.
But, but we would have a permit on record that that was permitted as a four-bedroom house.
And the, the second comment I'm going to make is that I've sold several homes that, um, I went to the city myself to get the permits and the city said, we don't have any permits for that property, and go back to the owner and the owner has the completed, signed-off permits because so many of our houses are so old that we don't have all the records. So therefore, this house that I was going to consider, all, um, all non-bedrooms, non-family room, were actually permitted four bedrooms and family room. And that's not uncommon.
Um, I, I know it's not always there, but it could help in, in some cases. Um, anyway, I just, can, can we ask for it as, now is my question to staff.
In just understanding what you're asking for, it seems pretty basic and that, I think, could be incorporated as part of the application. But again, to the extent that we would want to enforce something as a requirement of the STR permit, that would need to be in the ordinance.
Okay, I understand that. Um, I, I mean, I'll give the example of the house next to me that is claiming five bedrooms and some of them open right off the garage, and that's a code violation. So that's a building life safety issue. So some things like that, you know, a planner looking at the application would know, oh, you know, maybe you can only permit three bedrooms and not four, right? So I'm, I'm, I'm just trying as much as we can to make sure we're keeping people safe.
Right.
So I would like to ask for those diagrams and however they're used, you know, I, I mean, that's up to staff. We're not, we're not telling you, we're not saying it has to be an inspection right now because we can't do that, but-
I agree.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we haven't talked about this at all, but this was in Half Moon Bay's ordinance. Is the unit deed restricted? Do we let people, do we let people rent when they're affordable units?
Right. And I was, when I remember when I read that and I thought about deed-restricted units in Pacifica, we have the Gateway location, I'm sure we have a few others. We have Onclarendon, um, The Corner.
Lakeshire, I think.
And I think the intent, you know, often in deed restrictions is for low-income eligibility, but it, maybe there's other deed restrictions. I thought we're casting a wide net and I didn't know what else would fall in there. I mean, from our discussion of the LCIP, there's a deed restriction that says, you know, potentially there's erosion issues or sea level rise or something like that.
Maybe we can say deed-restricted affordable units.
Affordable deed, yeah.
Um, and, and I don't know, maybe, does it, does it take an ordinance amendment to say we can't have short-term rentals in deed-restricted units?
Uh, generally, the deed restriction speaks to that itself. So no, you don't need to have it in the ordinance because the deed restriction itself restricts that, may restrict that type of use.
Could we just ask that question on the application? So it's a flag if, to, to educate a person if they are trying to rent it and don't necessarily know their restriction?
I, I don't know how many units, I mean, that seems like there's not that many units that would be subject to a deed restriction such that we should include it in the application, but you could certainly include it in the application. Um, it's just that there's nothing in the code again that says anything about deed restriction. It's the deed restriction itself that governs the use of the property.
Right, but-
Councilmember Bowles, I'd certainly love to see analysis from staff as to whether or not there are units of, um, seven or less in which deed restriction exists, but generally speaking, I go to our inclusionary ordinance when I think what most likely is deed-restricted. And so I, I wouldn't mind sending that question back to staff to come back to us before including it on the application, but I, it doesn't occur to me right now without that analysis would be a thing.
Um, yeah, I just, I'm just bringing it up. I, I think, I think we do need to have something just to make sure that we don't let something slip through.
Yes.
Um, can we ask if there are any existing permit violations? If they know of any existing permit violations?
As to what?
On the application.
Like what permit violations are you?
If, um, if they've done unwarranted work, that's, that's a different thing. If there's unwarranted work or a permit violation.
So the city would have that information? So I, I-
I'm, I'm asking the applicant to tell us the truth, right? If they know something. We, we don't necessarily have all the right records.
Which road leads to the town where everyone tells lies and which road leads to the town where everyone tells the truth? It's an old riddle. You meet a guy at a fork in the road or a gal and never-
Um, I think the premise, and I believe it was addressed in the staff report, is should we allow, if I'm, I'm going to restate it with the way I think I understand it, should we allow someone who has some kind of deficiency, some kind of violation with the city to be allowed to put forward an STR application? Am I correct?
No.
That's not what it said? Or you're saying don't let-
No, no. I'm saying they shouldn't be allowed.
Right.
If you have an unpermitted use, then you shouldn't be allowed a short-term rental permit.
Right. And I was trying to think of another case, like if, I mean, I can't think of a good reason, but maybe staff could fill it in for me. You know, you have an unpaid debt to the city or something, you know? We've had this come up before with, I think, again, in our cannabis regulations. All the stuff has to be clean before you can do this other thing. And so I think that's what I thought of when I read it, but the staff report said it would be hard to do or doesn't, it isn't recommended.
I think, I think the, I think the staff report, um, misunderstood our direction about that because it was saying that we can't, um, I'm trying to remember exactly, but we can't force, you know, permits or block permits, block permits. If, if, um, but all I'm out, all I'm, I just want to make sure that we have a way of finding out and having the owner fess up if they know that there's something unpermitted. Again, it goes to, it goes to, if you've lied on this and we find something else later, this gives you, gives us a chance to revoke your permit. Right?
They're suggesting that combined with the onsite inspection.
Or suspended until, or suspended until you fix the problem.
But that's not currently in the ordinance, so that's my concern is that we have, the city has the ability to be checking for violations before, as they're reviewing the application, and hopefully that is happening. But there's nothing in the code that says you can't, you know, that we can revoke or deny a permit because you've misstated facts on your application. And so-
Well, let, let me give you a specific example of something that happened on Esplanade. So a tenant was being told they were evicted, the, and so they left. Oh, they were told they were being evicted because construction work was happening and so they left. Construction work started happening, including, you know, a huge remodel, you know, taking off all the drywall, replacing all the electrical. They never got permits for the building, but somehow they got their STR permit during that same timeframe.
That shouldn't be allowed.
So are there, are there open, yeah, you know, are there violations or unpermitted work? I mean, just asking the question and, and letting them answer, you know, hopefully, truthfully, then we would know whether to investigate or not since we're not doing the inspections now and it, you know.
Appreciating that it's not currently in the ordinance, the question that we're asking, I think that by putting those questions on the form, it gives them a heads-up that will likely be adjusting the ordinance that way in the not-too-distant future and that they may want to get their ducks in a row. Because I think where Councilmember Bowles' questions are leading are to ordinance adjustments that we will be making. And so while the chicken is coming before the egg, that's not to suggest there won't be another chicken.
Yeah, and it's just, it's a way that we can hopefully start to weed out some of these bad actors, right? While we're doing the work of finalizing the ordinance.
Or give them the heads-up that they should start making their adjustments so that they won't be bad actors in the future.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so just so I'm clear. So we have one permit per person, right?
Entity.
Per entity. They have to be, they have to respond in 30 minutes and be onsite in six, in an hour if something's wrong, right? So that means they're local. Then maybe I would be okay with saying 90 days instead of 60 days? Just because we did hear that, that earlier tonight, that that wouldn't be good for their livelihood?
Mm-hmm.
So if they're local and, and they can only have one permit, I don't know. That, that was just my thought around that.
I'm, I'm open to considering 90 days too, but I, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily an argument because you could, you could have a representative be that person for you to be there, right? It's not necessarily that you, the owner, have to be there in an hour. Um, right?
Maybe the owner does need to be there. Maybe it has to be-
Well, the owner might be traveling. I don't think, I mean, yeah, that's, I don't think that's a fair requirement, but they have to know somebody who could be there in an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And some of them could have a property manager also, even-
Right.
Even, um, even if they live next door. You know, it's, it's still possible.
So did, did we have, I, I don't know if we had three of us say that we wanted to ask those questions about any existing permit, permit violations or unpermitted work? Just if we're giving staff direction?
I- Sounds like a good direction to me.
I like it.
Okay, that's the, um, okay, and then we're asking, you know, if the applicant is the owner and if not, have a written consent of the landlord. Um, Half Moon Bay has this, and I know it was an issue here about asking about homeowners' association rules, so asking if a property is part of a homeowners' association and if so, having a letter of approval from them. This came up in, I think it's Pacifica View Estates north of Ocean Air, so their, their bylaws say that you can't have rentals under 30 days. And actually, the other one at Skyridge, um, I learned today has the same regulation, but someone bought it, the city doesn't ask, so they started, they got their permit for a short-term rental and, you know, the HOA was complaining, saying, no, you can't do that. This is your bylaws. And they're like, sue me. And they're like, sue me. You know, that was their response. So, I mean, what is our responsibility to homeowners' associations? And do we want to respect that?
Well, doesn't it already say something about homeowners, I mean, the current?
So it does say, "Approval of a short-term rental permit does not legalize any use or structure not permitted by law or contract, including but not limited to restrictions imposed by a homeowners' association or an lease agreement." In other words, it's, it's the short-term rental permit's, permatee's responsibility to comply with whatever homeowners' association requirements attached to the property. And that's pretty typical. The city, you know, the, the homeowners' association enforces their CCNRs and any other restrictions against the homeowner, and the city doesn't get involved in enforcement of the CCNRs.
But it's, I think where you're going is there, there shouldn't be allowed to be an STR there if the HOA says no.
Right.
And we're, if we have a limited number of STR permits and we issue one, well, maybe it gets to the question of if, if there's inaccurate or fraudulent information in the application. Does the property have an A, you know, I forget how to say it, but does the property have an HOA? Yes, no? And if you say no, and it really does, then it's a falsification of the application and you can't have the STR there. So if the HOA is mad, we have grounds to be able to say you can't have it anymore.
Right.
But you're saying we wouldn't do that because we don't want to do the business of the HOA.
Right, and, and making a determine, a legal determination on whether they can or cannot have short-term rentals in their, in their development. So, I mean, that's part of the complexity of including a requirement that the city confirmed that the HOA is, is approves short-term rentals. Then the city's got to go figure out is what they're providing to us appropriate? Is it legal? Is, you know, what if one, one person says they can and another person says they can't? And then the city becomes sort of embroiled in that argument. So that, that, those are the policy considerations.
Mayor, what do you think about that?
And likely, I wasn't around when this ordinance was originally adopted, but that's likely why that language was included in the ordinance, that the city is just saying, hey, you know?
It's, it's kind of putting the city in the middle, like Denise said, because, you know, we're, we're not going to interpret everybody's HOA documents before we allow permits to be issued. If they know it's not allowed, but people may not, you know, a homeowner's document is 350 pages. Do, do you think everybody reads those when they get them? And I know, like, there was, for a while, the Fairmont Homeowners' Association told people that they were not allowed to build ADUs even though the state law allowed for them. Do we get in the middle of that argument? Not likely. I mean, they might, you know, they might come up with a rule, but it not, it's not necessarily a real, true rule. They had to change everything.
What does Half Moon Bay's ordinance say about HOAs?
I don't know. I'd have to go...
I like the deed restriction part, so maybe they address that in theirs too.
I, I do have it up if you...
I'm willing to leave that aside. I don't think it's really that plentiful or frequent, but I could be off-base.
It would also be good for us to hear from staff, like, the, the list of directions that you heard from us, just so we're clear.
Just, if I, just one more question on the application. I mean, can, can a notice to neighbors be part of the process now?
I would not recommend that. That, that sort of goes above and beyond what's contemplated in the ordinance and puts, you know, information out to, you know, we don't have any parameters on what the notice requirements are. So like, how far? 300 feet? 500 feet? I mean, how far is enough? And then who pays for that? Does the city pay for that? Does the applicant pay for that? None of that is, is sort of contemplated anywhere.
So we can talk about that later then.
Yes, I think that, that definitely can be a requirement in the ordinance revisions.
Okay.
And, and it sort of brings up the whole other point of, as a homeowner, you own your house. If you're allowed to rent, like, I could rent every bedroom in my house to two people and not be a short-term rental. It could annoy the neighbors equally as much as if it was a short-term rental because everybody could have two cars that rented my house, and I could rent to 10 people. So I, I know that that was sort of like not in the middle of what we were talking about right now, but it, it does matter.
I feel like we're differentiating between common uses of residences and STRs which are apart, via the way we're discussing it.
I don't know if that's a common use, but it's allowable. Okay, I'll, I'll drop that one for right now.
Um, I think, I believe Half Moon Bay requires 500 feet, and I would recommend that the applicant pay for it. Just throwing that out there. I return to one of the commenters' notions that their top three issues...
I was just looking at that.
Was the unhosed definition, the safety checks. I feel like we've kind of addressed those. The fine structure for disturbing the peace calls is the one that I feel like we haven't gone into.
We haven't.
The staff report goes into limits of 1,500, 3,000, and then 5,000 thereafter, and I was fine with that recommendation.
I agree with the fines all the way.
Yeah, same.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hosted versus un...
Definition of hosted versus unhosted. So if a person owns, lives in their house, they're a primary residence, they're away, can they rent it out as a short-term rental? They're on vacation themselves in Europe, say, on a plane. Are they allowed to rent it out for some number of days when, and not physically be there? Do they have to get someone else to physically be there? Like, I need to understand, like, the nuance of when we say hosted, host onsite 24 by 7 the whole time. What does that mean?
I think hosted means someone is there the whole time, but unhosted can have a certain number of days that there's no one there. So, right? That's, yeah, not, not all year round.
Staff report says host was defined as a host on premises at all times between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
No, we can't do hours. Some people work weird hours. It's, it's just, you know, you just say you're on the premises, and you're not going to be able to monitor how many hours a person is there.
But I'm not there. I mean, just using my own example, I'm at work.
If you're not there, if you're not, well...
I'm not going to be in my house 24 by 7, all hours of the day and night, right?
Right.
I think that accounting for not specifying hours, a host is someone who is sleeping at their house at the same time that they have guests utilizing the empty room or whatever. Something like that gets at the, without limiting the hours. Point being that in a 24-hour cycle, there is somebody coming and going who belongs to that house while the people who are the short-term renters are present.
Okay.
And so we're differentiating, differentiating because, why?
Because if you're capping an unhosed STR to 60 or 90 days, but you're letting hosted STRs be whatever they will be, it's very important that we have a definition in place of what that means.
I mean, that's what I know. I knew that, but I wanted to make sure that what we were talking about because I felt like we addressed it with the, trying to get rid of the corporations, so with one permit.
So, I mean, I think the last time I read Half Moon Bay's, and I can read it again, I'm, I'm, I think their definitions are fine. What is a short, what is an unhosed short-term rental? An unhosed short-term rental is a short-term rental where no resident is present in the rental, rental during the course of the rental. So as long as you're there sometime, I mean, maybe, I don't know, if you want to say sleep, I, sleeping, I don't know. And then an unhosed short-term rental should be no operated, operated no more than however many nights we decide per calendar year. And then a hosted short-term rental is a short-term rental where a resident who is the operator and acting as a host occupies one or more bedrooms in a dwelling unit while other areas of the unit are rented for the purpose of transient overnight lodging. And they have no limitation on the number of nights a hosted short-term rental may be rented, and I, I agree with that.
Yep.
So is there a loophole there? Unhosted, where no resident is present in the rental unit during the course of the rental? No, I mean, I think that makes sense. I'm getting tired, so I'm not...
You didn't talk about the limiting the days.
And when we're talking about hosted and unhosted, this is where I, I wanted to mention in terms of monitoring and enforceability, this is based on self-reporting from, from the owners, because there's, there's no way to, to otherwise track that.
But if we have the law, if the neighbors know you're on vacation, we have some enforcement.
It seems like the operators going through Airbnb, there is a mechanism where Airbnb could be supplying the data if Airbnb is acting in good faith. So that's a start. I know that we're trying to work with VRBO, and I'm not sure how far we've gotten to be able to say definitively one way or the other they're not willing to work with us. So I think largely it's the efforts that count.
The platform accountability, we can't even talk about that tonight.
No.
I think the neighbors will provide the proper information.
Yeah.
And there's that.
90 days? What are we doing?
Well, I think about it this way. We presently have no limitations whatsoever. So going from no limitations to 90 days is a big cut in, you know, the way people are operating.
Yep.
That may be what we decide we want to do, but I'm thinking the impact of that could be, you know, very strong. And this notion of bad actors and a few bad actors and big corporations ruining it for everyone else kind of thing does resonate with me to a point. On the other hand, the notion of a residence or a duplex that could be someone's house all the time also resonates. And so it's really about what is your intent, I think. When we first decided on having an STR ordinance, it was because we have a visitor-serving economy and we could collect temporary occupancy tax. We knew there were short-term rentals happening in town anecdotally, and there, because we had no ordinance, we weren't, had no basis for collecting temporary occupancy tax. So that was absolutely the focus. It was absolutely a financial decision in my recollection. Of course, we didn't really know the quagmire that short-term rentals were going to turn into. I don't know if it was foreseeable, but we didn't foresee it. And here we are today in a quagmire. And so I want to fix it. I'm just not sure the right way to fix it, or how rapidly or in, you know, I don't know. So... What are everyone's thoughts? We've heard 60, we've heard 90. I haven't heard anything higher than that at this point.
And, I mean, I think...
I said 120, but...
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Mayor.
It's okay.
At some, we, we do have the data from about eight cities in the county, not all the cities, but, yeah, I think 60 was on the low and 120 was on the high. So, I mean, 90's, I think 90's a good intermediate number.
I wanted to just point to a, a piece of information that, that is in the information that staff provided is that those other cities that have day limitations don't have caps on their number of STRs, just for your information.
I certainly don't feel comfortable going above 90. My motivation being what I don't want to happen are entities buying up houses to flip them into STRs. And I guess I kind of don't know where the cap lies that it wouldn't be worth it to an investor to buy up a house to turn it into a hotel room.
San Francisco did that analysis in 2015 as part of the documentation that was shared, and it varied by neighborhood. I thought that was really interesting.
We didn't even talk about density yet.
Yeah.
Well, that being said, I'm inclined to not want to go above 90, given my level of uncertainty.
Well...
I want to revisit the density thing. We can't do that tonight.
It is 1255.
Right. And I'm thinking about some public comment that we had tonight and have had in the past that if someone couldn't rent a whole, a home as an STR, and therefore we wouldn't collect the pro, the TOT, they could go to the hotel and rent the hotel, and we would collect the TOT. But what we don't have is any information that's concrete about occupancy. Some people say there's tons of room for occupancy and everyone can be accommodated at the hotels. Other people say we have 90% occupancy. But we, what I do know is we don't have very many hotel rooms in this town.
Well, a hotel room doesn't meet the needs of a family. I mean, I travel on, with short-term rentals too. I'm a, I'm a good renter. I follow all the rules and make sure...
I bet you do.
But, yeah, I mean, I need a three-bedroom house when I'm traveling, and, and there are people like that. So, I mean, I, I don't want to ban them all. I think they, they do serve a population. But, yeah, not making them hugely profitable, right? That's not the point. We're helping people stay in their homes, we're helping people have extra income when they're traveling. But at, at some point, if you can rent too many days and they're hugely profitable and you're losing more housing stock to investors and not to, to people committed to the community.
Does staff have direction?
Yeah, right. From us, because it's about to, time to conclude the meeting, Mayor?
Yes.
I, I, I mean, we have direction on some of the policy considerations. It sounds like there's others that the council wants to continue to discuss. I, I'm not sure we have sufficient clarity and direction for the attorney's off, office and staff to actually spend the time and money drafting ordinance provisions, but we can start. Another question I have is, is the council's expectation that we're going to take this information and start collaboration with coastal staff to see what their response is? And typically, they have a lot of Pacifica, specific data requests they're going to want to know. That's what they did when we took the cap to them, so maybe some of that data overlaps and it won't be too onerous. But to begin that process before we bring back ordinance revisions, that's what staff had, had suggested. So I need council direction on that. If, if we're going to start that process, but then council wants to continue to discuss other policy considerations at some future meeting, you know, we'll need to agendize that, so...
I'm not comfortable having you, I mean, you can start, but I, I don't think we've had the totality of the conversation, especially with regard to jurisdiction. And the coastal commission would certainly have an interest in knowing what we were going to talk about in that regard.
City attorney, is this one of those ones where we can continue this study session to a date determined or to be determined so that we can continue the discussion past public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that we should continue this study session accordingly, having heard robust public comment, so that we can finish our discussion.
I agree.
I agree.
And, and, and so I looked at the agenda planner, and we could potentially do that at the next city council meeting, September 9th, I want to say it is, perhaps?
I move that we continue to
But, but just for clarity before you move, is the, because what we wouldn't have time for on the agenda that night is hours of public comment.
Why don't, we don't have five minutes, continue at five more minutes, so that we can have this discussion?
I move to continue until 1:05.
Second.
Motion to continue to 1:05, made by Big Stick, seconded by Beer, Councilmember Bowles.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Vaterlos.
Yes.
And that's unanimously missed.
Thank you.
So specifically, I'm asking so that we can say that, you know, this is an LCLUP where what we're looking at is changing with every iteration. We've heard public feedback, they have every right to send us, you know, however many emails they'd like between now and then. But I think that we're in the middle of a conversation, and we should finish that conversation, so within the context of, no, I'm not looking for additional oral communications from public, though you all are welcome to send us as many emails as you like.
Meet with us?
And meet with us. I would move that we continue this study session to a date certain of September 9th.
Second.
And then, can I just ask? And so Kevin, it felt like you, there were some things that you needed more direction, and so maybe you can be super clear about what we missed for next time.
Well, sure. I, I believe you had just mentioned something that you wanted to talk about more.
Yeah, that's me.
Jurisdiction, number of STRs in different jurisdictional, you know, like by district or coastal zone versus not, or whatever.
Yeah.
Or how many feet from each other could they be, or
Yeah, so that, so council will pick that up.
That for sure. And I'm sure other things, too, that we realized later that we
And then, and then the goal would be to confirm all the policy considerations that you want built into the ordinance?
Yes.
We have some direction I got pretty clearly. Staff took notes, I have notes about some stuff we build into the, the rental, I mean, the permit application
Application, yes.
This go-around.
And did we give direction that we start the ball rolling with coastal staff now?
No, because we want to talk about jurisdiction stuff first.
Okay.
Because they're going to want to know, how many are going to be in the coastal zone? That's going to be their first thought.
Okay.
Don't you think?
I think that it's never too early to begin coordination with coastal staff, and even, you know, saying, hey, the thing is coming, here's what we've got so far, and we can add to it later. My hunch is that's the better approach, just because at this point in my life, I'm of the mind that anytime I have anything to send to coastal staff, I'd rather do it before I know what it is than
But I don't think we've said anything that really deviates very much from the Half Moon Bay ordinance, which has been approved. So I, I don't have a lot of
Right. And for those things that staff does have direction on, I would like to know sooner than later what coastal commi, coastal staff's interest is in terms of what data they'll feel like they'll need, and even if we should really have it all defined beforehand, it would be good at least to know what kind of stuff they will want when we're ready to send them the package.
Yeah. Realistically speaking, I don't think we're going to make any progress with coastal staff before September 9th.
Okay.
We're, we're trying to schedule meetings with them on the LCLUP.
So we won't be hearing from, an update from that.
And can I just ask one more question? I mean, there were some very strong comments about economic analysis. Do you all feel like you need an economic analysis to make decisions at this point?
I don't know that by September 9th, they'll be able to give us the kind of analysis we'd be looking for.
Yeah.
And I do want to finish the discussion on September 9th.
Yes.
And a lot of it is totally unknown. I mean, we don't know whether people go to restaurants, or buy gifts, or what they do. We don't know whether a person renting a house is going to have children. That affects the school district financially. There's so much unknown, I don't think we could do a financial analysis.
I agree.
I'm just, I'm not, yeah, so I'm trying to get the feel, if, if it's even necessary. I mean, for me, that's not the most important piece of information.
That's why personally, I hold fast to the planning work we're doing, rather than the various numbers, none of which I can point to and say, ah, yes, that's the definitive number that we should base our decision-making on.
Can I move, Chair?
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer. So we'd need a motion to adjourn to the September 9th meeting.
So I made the motion, it was seconded. Roll call vote? Chair?
Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Bowles.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Vaterlos.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously to continue adjourn to date certain September 9th.
Good night.
And we're now adjourned?
We are now adjourned.
Bye, Sue. We miss you so much.
Miss you, go to bed.
Love you.
Love you.